Topics for discussion that are very exciting about what's going on in our city. So I want to thank you all for being here today. And a couple of changes on the agenda. The neighborhood presentation by Dr. Felix Rivera Marion will not be heard tonight. He's asked if he could come at a different time, so he won't be attending tonight. So our first order of business is Broward Commuter Rail South update. Commissioner District Four, is Commissioner District here? Okay, very good. So give us an update.
Absolutely. Good afternoon. Milos Mistorovic, Acting Director for Cities Transportation and Mobility Department. Today we have staff from Florida Department of Transportation and also Broward County to provide us with an update related to Broward Commuter Rail South project. It is about 10-minute presentation followed by any questions that you might have. And at this point, I will turn it over to Ms. Corey Kafflonergan, who is Director of Transportation for Broward County.
Great, thank you so much. Hello, Corey.
Hello, hello. Hello, Mayor.
What was your title? What is your title?
Vice Chair Glaspin.
She's the Director of Broward County. You're Director of Transportation for the county?
Yes, sir, I am.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
The tunnel's open, by the way.
By what?
The tunnel, no, nothing.
Oh.
The tunnel.
She had nothing to do with that.
I was like looking down and like, what's happening right now? Thank you so much for having us here today. We're really excited to bring to you a quick overview. We understand we have 10 minutes and we take that very seriously of the Broward Commuter Rail South project. We've been working very closely with our colleagues in Miami. They have the Northeast Corridor. Our intent is to join them very quickly and open up that extension so that we have service from Fort Lauderdale into Miami-Dade on the Florida East Coast Railroad. So I'm really glad to be here today. Thank you so much for your time. Joining me today is Phil Schwab. Phil's going to give the overview and also Gia Bian, who is our project manager from the county. So thank you again and glad to see everybody.
They beat you up in your department, haven't they?
Yeah, you know, through this project, I've torn my Achilles and had surgery and then I broke my arm, so.
Oh, Lord. I suggest getting a different job. That Corey could be tough.
All right, so I'm going to go through this very quick. I know a lot of you are familiar with the project, so I don't want to belabor too many points. Just, I got to touch on the history because the corridor itself has a long history where the department had planning studies going back 20 years now. 85 miles of track on the FEC, Palm Beach, Broward, and Miami-Dade. Miami-Dade was able to start moving forward a couple of years before Broward. Broward's entered an agreement with FDOT. That's why FDOT is leading the study. But it's a county project, so in 2021, that was executed. We went through lots of efforts to try and get the entire county done, but at some point, we had to move forward and everyone was very supportive of the BCR South project, so that's what this update is about. We've entered into project development, FTA. We're a small starts project. They're very supportive of the project and really up and down the line, we've gotten a lot of support from everybody. So the PDNE is just one step. There's a lot more steps to go. Design, construction, operations and maintenance. PDNE is a FDOT term, but it really is the process FDOT uses to meet the NEPA guidelines. And we have to meet the NEPA guidelines to get federal funding. So you're familiar with the project itself. It's 11 and a half miles, starts at Aventura, goes up to South Fort Lauderdale. We have stations at Hollywood.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
How long is that process going to take, the environmental study?
We expect to get approval in the next couple of months, next few months.
It can be done just in two months? It can be completed in two months?
Well, we've been going on it for over a year now, almost.
Is that right?
So we got our class of action determination as an environmental assessment. So typically, you have 12 months to complete that once they acknowledge what it is. And so our 12 months is up in September. They're trying to get it for approval by August.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Yeah, no problem. So we have stations at Hollywood, South Fort Lauderdale by Broward Health, and then the airport will have 30-minute headways during peak hours. So there's a lot of reasons why you do projects like this, particularly to support growth and economic development. Getting people out of cars helps reduce emissions, so you improve the environment. Also, people become less car-dependent. And when you start getting a lot of densities, as we see along the corridor, it's very supportive to improve transit all around, where people are more likely to ride a train, to take a bus somewhere and so forth. So it really helps support the whole system. So on the corridor, there's a lot of challenges, particularly because it's a private corridor. FECR owns the corridor, they run freight on it. Brightline has a passenger rail easement on it, so they manage that passenger rail rights. And so agreements will need to be stricken with the county and both of those entities to be able to move forward successfully. So the stations are going to be more commuter-like. They're not the Brightline stations. You see the Sun Rail stations that have been going up in the Orlando area, more similar to that, about 500 foot in length, 17 foot wide. We'll have wayfinding by the stations, improve the connectivity locally around the stations so we can get people from where they're coming from to the stations, improve the grade crossings around the stations. Where we have stations, they're going to have platforms for the stations. We have to do what's called a siding track, so that's a separate track that has to branch off of the two main lines in order to serve the platforms.
Could I ask a quick question about that?
Yes.
So I was just out in San Francisco and you've got Bart and Caltrans running through there. And, you know, right down the middle of the street, and their stations or maybe their platform is maybe like two or three feet above grade. And, I mean, it's really just a very, very simplistic platform to get on and off those trains as opposed to, again, I grew up in New York, much bigger, you know, elevated platforms and everything else. So when we're talking about this, is it more like that Caltrans-Bart sort of thing? Like right at grade level and, you know, go two, three steps and you're getting onto a train? Or is this a much more elaborate structure?
So when you say elaborate, I mean, the difference is the height of the platform, right? How tall are these platforms? And that's still to be determined. The goal is to have level boarding, which means you don't have to take steps to get in and so forth.
Like Brightline is now, right? You just step right onto the train, right?
Yeah, that's the goal. There's some challenges with vehicle types and also with what's going on, you know, to connect at Miami Central and some of the Miami stations as well. So ultimately, it'll be one service, right? That goes from downtown Miami, hopefully up through Palm Beach County. And we want to be consistent in the experiences that people have. So there's a lot of communication going on right now between Broward County and Miami-Dade. They're also talking to SFRTA as well to figure out what type of vehicles and that'll really set the platform heights.
So I'm just thinking, so I've ridden a lot of public transportation, so Long Island Railroad, Metro North, PATH trains. And most of these stations are, again, fairly elaborate. There's all kinds of facilities associated with them. You know, you got vending at a lot of them, bathrooms and everything else, as opposed to just a very, very simplistic platform, which has nothing, no amenities whatsoever. It's just a basic platform to, you know, to level out, to your point, to level out between the platform and the train itself. But there's no large infrastructure around us, basically just a platform, like a loading dock almost, you know, and you go on.
Yeah, there are anticipation for having restrooms available, security and so forth. But as far as the elaborate stations, this is a commuter station. It's not meant to be elaborate.
Yeah, is that similar to like the rapid bus that they have down in Miami, too? Which, you know, the rapid bus lanes are fairly small little platforms that they got over there.
Yeah, I haven't seen those platforms. But again, this needs to accommodate the entire train, so it's about 500 feet long and accommodate the passengers and so forth and be able to handle that.
That's a long train, 500 feet.
Well, the platform is 500 feet. It's also meant to accommodate whatever expansion could happen, you know, if you have to add trains in the future. It's better to get all that program now.
Phil, would you want us to hold questions to the end or should we ask as we go along? What's easier for you?
Well, if you allow more than 10 minutes, which I think we're probably pushing up against.
No, 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 take your time. This is important.
Why don't we ask questions as we go along? Because otherwise, they get lost.
Okay, so going back to what John was talking about, it's a hop-on, hop-off as opposed to Brightline with a station, the whole bit. Tickets will be sold in a kiosk or you're going to have a pass you come on? Or would you have to stop to get your, how would that work? Or you don't know yet?
So that's still to be determined, but the counties are talking closely on having ticket vending machines. I mean, the idea ultimately would be all wireless, all kind of electronic type of service. And again, the goal is to have one ticket service where you pay a price to go somewhere and whatever route you're taking, it all fits in.
Jump on, jump off, sort of.
I mean, that's the goal, but that takes some work.
Question at the beginning, where at the beginning, you mentioned something. So, and we've been involved in this from day one and it keeps changing. BCR, Broward County, the south end. Who's going to own it? I guess you said it's a Broward County project and it's going back and forth, who's going to own it or operate it? Is it currently this phase is Broward County because it goes into Aventura?
Well, it's a Broward County project, just like Miami-Dade has a project to put commuter rail in. Ultimately, they'll have to work together to find one governing body for the, how they want to operate the one service at that point.
So, but this piece itself that we're talking about is Broward County spearheading this piece?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So the graphic you see there, the shading, the cyan shading, that's the 500-foot platform. We're also making provisions for potential for a future pedestrian bridge, if necessary, if we end up moving the project to the north and we add another platform on the other side. So we just want to make sure we make those provisions. Everything will be ADA compliant. We're looking at a couple of different parking options there. That'll most likely be determined during final design. The next graphic is more of a sectional view and to your point, Commissioner, as far as the platform height. You see, we have TBD, I think I used that earlier, TBD. But the idea is that that could be, you know, a higher platform to allow for that level boarding. You have to make sure that you're able to make all the ADA connections and it fits the vehicle and that vehicle must also fit in Miami Central, Aventura, all the other stations as well. How do you accommodate that? So that's why there's a lot of communication going on now between the counties to figure a lot of that out. And we've gotten a lot of feedback through meetings like this on people have various ideas and so forth. So everybody wants the final design now, but we're in the environmental study. But in order to plan properly, they have to continue those conversations. This is the pedestrian way and if I can go backwards. This area here on 16th, you see like a U between the purple and the orange there. So that's this graphic here. This shows that drop-off area and bus drop-off area with a little pedestrian way on 16th, which is a dead-end street at the tracks. And you can see a little bit of that from this rendering to show, you know, potentially what it could look like. And we just threw in the parking garages on both sites we're looking at just for aesthetics. All right. This is a rendering at that 16th Avenue for the walkway. You can put people in some hospital gear to, with this connection to Broward.
That's me in the background.
So the environmental study looks at all the different categories of environmental, you know, social, natural, physical and cultural. Through what we've seen is the project actually enhances safety, connectivity, mobility and supports the economy and growth that's happening there. There's minor to no, really no significant impacts from the project at all. I do have a couple of traffic slides just to show you and safety because I know that's at the forefront if we have time. So there was a micro-simulation type of traffic study done at the grade crossings to ensure that any queues that would accumulate when a train crossed, that they would clear. So we're adding, you know, during peak periods, three to five trains in addition to what's already out there. And we looked at those and we had the schedules from Brightline and FECR and that gets plugged into the model as well as the future traffic growth. And so there's really no change in what we expect the level of service to be with or without the project from a traffic standpoint. And if you're in a queue that gets caught for the train, you'll be able to clear it before the next train comes. And then at these, particularly at the crossings where we're adding tracks and expanding, you know, the number of rail lines that go through with the siding gates, we're going to have four quadrant systems. We're adjusting for pedestrian preemption. There'll be signs for the second train coming. So there's several features and there's a lot of projects that are ongoing for safety along the corridor. So we're incorporating some of the best practices that come out of those and ensuring that if they're getting placed ahead of the project, that we can accommodate it either by avoiding it or re-putting it back in when we're done. So from a ridership standpoint, you know, we use what's called the stops model, which every time I get asked, I never remember what it is. It's simplified trips on project software. Everybody going through FTA grants has to use this model. And in fact, FTA ended up setting the ridership that we have now, which is pretty decent. It's good for a small starts project. I mean, we've got great places, right? We've got Broward Health as an employer. We've got connections that can be made to the bus routes on US One, Convention Center, Port. It's really, really a nice location. Plus, the airport is a great destination as well. And City of Hollywood, when we first did a field review out of the City of Hollywood, they had, I think, bocce ball courts or shuffleball courts there. Now go out there and they've got, you know, a four-story building. They have Berry University going up there. So it's really, we know that when FTA sets things, they try and be conservative on ridership. So we're expecting the ridership to exceed what they're setting for sure.
Could I ask you, you mentioned the airport stop.
Yeah.
So what's going on there? I mean, I understand that there were some issues with FECR as to whether or not we were going to be able to actually have a stop at the airport. Is there any, is there any resolution or solution to that dispute?
So I don't know if it's a dispute. I know FECR wants some other things, maybe not all related to the airport station. And I think it has to deal with them wanting or the need to get access easements, maybe more so for the airport projects because the airport has the automated people mover that has to go over the tracks a couple of times and so forth. So there's a lot of, I'll say, negotiations kind of going on at the moment. But we know that any type of modeling that we do, because right now FECR, if you go out to the airport, you see several tracks out there. So there are a lot of storage tracks. It's a yard for the FEC.
Right.
So we've developed the design and we've shared it with them. They're really, they want to make sure that the operations modeling works. So we're still continuing that coordination on what their future schedules look like and so forth. So we'll be able to make something work to their satisfaction before we even move forward with the project.
So will you have a similar type platform at the airport stop at all these stops that you mentioned?
So the air, all right, so they're a little bit different and I didn't include all the graphics because we had a short period of time. But Hollywood Station has platforms on northbound and southbound, separate sidings for both. Fort Lauderdale South has the one platform and we just do a crossover since that's the end of the line for now.
Crossover, like overhead or underneath?
No, the train, the train will go from the, the train, when it comes up from the south, it'll stop at the platform and then it's got to go southbound. So it'll head.
It'll use the same.
It'll use the same track and it just has to cross over. So those are crossovers for the trains that are just in between the two existing mains.
I'm sorry, I have a question. If we can go back a little bit. You had indicated there are opportunities for connectors and you indicated Broward Convention Center and I think two others. What does that connector opportunity look like?
So it's more like the shuttle and bus routes and that type of stuff. We get a lot of questions at these meetings about will they have spots for micro-transit? You know, electric scooters, electric bikes. And I know Tri-Rail has a good challenge right now. Hopefully, they find out some good solutions. Is that there's so many people riding now and they're bringing their bikes and so forth. They're trying to figure out how to really accommodate that and get people in and off the train. So that's something we definitely have to plan for and figure out and they got to live with it right now. And so hopefully, we'll continue to grow as this moves into the next phases for the design and so forth.
Thank you.
But going back to the airport station, the platform, this will be more of a center platform. So we're going to develop sidings. We're going to spread out the tracks that are there and just have one single platform, but it'll be served by northbound and southbound on both sides of the platform.
This is at 17th Street?
No, this is, this is at the airport.
Okay.
Because they're all a little different.
Yeah, yeah, I understand. Okay, all right, good. I mean, that airport stop is going to be very, is going to be crucial because that makes the line, you know, much more desirable because people coming from Miami or whatever would love to have a stop at the airport, including yours truly.
And as far as costs, 2023 cost is 291 million. So that includes vehicles, our portion of the maintenance yard and potential right-of-way that's needed. The operations and maintenance is estimated at 15 million. Since we're a small starts project, the maximum we can get is just under 150 million. So it fits in well as a small starts. And again, FTA is very supportive of it. Access fee hasn't been determined yet. So this is just different ways people can get information. We have our project website. We've done different briefings in different cities, the NPO and so forth. We did have a meeting the other week, May 22nd and 23rd, well-attended. A lot of good questions. A lot of the questions are more final design-oriented, but people are supportive of the project, so that's a positive. We have an email account so that we can be as responsive as we can. So people, if they email that, it goes to the right people to make sure we're responsive. And then as far as the schedule, we just conducted our second, we'll call it a major public information meeting for BCR South. We're going through a review process right now with FTA on our documents. Once they grant us approval to post it, we'll post it and that'll be an official 30-day public comment period. We get in those comments, we update as necessary and complete what's called a finding of no significant impact. And then the FTA will ultimately, we hope, grant the approval of the project. And that's what we're expecting to happen over the next few months. And then at that point, we'll get into earnest discussions on the small starts. Some of the information will be updated for our latest costs and so forth. And the county will be able to continue that process through risk. They do a lot of risk analysis on projects. So they'll go through that process with hopefully being able to actually obtain grant funding in 2025. And this is just the primo plan, closing slide as one of the first projects moving forward.
So to your question, Pam, these are the connector opportunities here. Could I ask a few questions? Well, first of all, Phil, thank you for being here, number one. I appreciate you being here. Number two, I appreciate, you know, you've reached out to us several times. The communication with our district and with the city as a whole, you've been very, very, very helpful. And I, you know, I love this project. A couple of quick things I just want to touch upon, which will be helpful for all of us, some of which we've spoken about already. The length of the commuter trains. Now, we speak about Brightline. Brightline has four trains, a locomotive in the front and in the back, which is a total of six. Now, when it came to crossing the river, this was an issue. How long are the commuter trains going to be, do they envision?
When you say long, well, there'll most likely be four car sets.
Right.
And so you'll have a locomotive and you'll have a couple of passenger cars and then you'll have another, what's the?
A caboose?
Well, it's not a caboose, but they're all most likely the double cab car. There you go.
But I said over and over again, it's going to be significantly shorter than the Brightline trains. Is that true? That's what?
Well, Brightline, what are they up to now? They're. Yeah, their goal is to have 850 feet. In fact, they push us to go to 1,000 feet because I know when we were doing a lot of detailed discussions about the station, they were, they had 850, but they wanted 1,000.
But you only need 500.
Yeah, 500.
Because your trains are, each car is shorter? Is that what it is or what?
Well, we're not going to have as many and I don't know the exact length of Brightline, so I can't say whether they're shorter or not. But to start the system, Miami-Dade is, they have 400-foot platforms. So our 100-foot is really to help accommodate future expansion.
So 500 feet could accommodate how many trains, how many cars per train?
I think it's five, right? Yeah, but the 500.
Four plus a locomotive.
We can make 500, five work for 500.
Five plus a locomotive.
Five plus a locomotive?
Okay. Question number two, you had a slide back there and we touched upon it at our town hall, if you just want to elaborate on that. I guess at three to five trains per hour, 90-second closing time per train. But what's the impact on the cycle, having reset the synchronization of, I mean, does that, I mean, does that reset the synchronization of the traffic lights on either side?
There can be some preemption and different things that can be done to address that. But this is with the normal cycles that are going on. So when they do that visum analysis, they're not readjusting signal timing and so forth. So it's more of a conservative approach because then there's different things you can do to implement things.
Thank you.
A lot of times, you have a good idea what's going to happen until you implement things and then you assess it and make those adjustments.
And John, like you have a lot of the trains going through you, so it's the same issue there. There's a difference between resetting and, like, 911 comes through there and they have to shut it down versus when you go through, you're not resetting, you're just preempting it. There was two different terms that they had used for that. I'm trying to remember what that is.
Yeah, it would be preemption.
Which is less of a burden on the through traffic, correct?
I would think the preemption.
Right. And the other question, you did bring this up and I'm glad you did. Would I like on some, like bus, you know, you could put bicycles on buses so people could go the first and last mile by bus. Would the commuter trains have, you could bring bicycles on them? Is that what they're thinking?
Good question. Oh, Corey, ready for this one?
Good afternoon, again. Thank you. Lots of great questions. So yes, the idea here is that we make it as convenient as possible for first mile, last mile. Some of these policy decisions haven't been formally agreed to yet between us and Miami-Dade. However, we do recognize that, you know, people do bike on trains to get, well, to get to the train and we want to encourage that. You'll see that on systems around the country, that that's normal for them to be, to have some kind of bike access. And sir, back to your question about Long Island Railroad and Metro North, et cetera. You know, some of the legacy railroads from way back when that started off as passenger service, they do have varying heights on the platforms because in those days, they had porters and the porters would help people get their luggage and get on the trains. But in today's environment, level boarding is ideal. And so when you think about boarding at the airport, you want to try your best to have level boarding for the ease of the passengers because you have luggage and things like that.
And this is a very minor thing. I mean, if you're going to have bikes, maybe people might only want bikes on one end, so you probably have bike racks to.
So there'll be, in the, from a safety perspective, you wouldn't have them anywhere outside of the train.
No, no, no. If somebody wants to bike and then take the train and not take their bike with them.
Yeah, we would have bike racks. That's the plan, yeah.
Correct, exactly, yeah.
Or bike lockers or something like that.
Correct, okay, great. Well, thanks.
Yeah.
Okay, that's it, Mr. Mayor, that was.
Thanks, Phil, you're doing a great job. I'm going to step back and sit down.
Okay. Thanks again, thank you again, Phil.
Does that conclude your presentation?
All right, thank you all.
Phil, while you're there, could I ask a question?
Sure.
Thanks so much. Can we just go back to the slide that has the rendering of the station, South Fort Lauderdale Station?
This one?
No, keep going.
No.
11.
That one. So let me ask you a question. And maybe this is a space constraint, but has anyone maybe thought a little bit outside the box? I mean, we read so much, we learn so much about transit-oriented development. Instead of just a garage, is it, have any, has anyone looked at the idea of maybe a mixed-use project where you would actually have not just that garage, but retail, office space, maybe even some sort of housing because of the importance of this site? Has that ever been discussed or thought of? Or is there even a possibility of that as a, perhaps a P3 project? But whatever, just to maybe think of doing something a little bit more than just a plain garage?
Yeah, no, I think it's a very good point. Really, surrounding any of these stations, there's a lot of potential, right, for what happens there. I know to simplify the process with FTA and NEPA and so forth, we're very specific in what the use is. Doesn't mean it can't change in the future. You'll have to go through reevaluations and that type of stuff to ensure whatever it is, because now you're looking at using federal funds, and when you start using federal funds, how that gets put into a P3 and so forth, you have to just be cautious and make sure that you're following whatever guidelines are needed at the time. So doesn't put it off the table at all. It's a really good point, but right now, we're just looking to make sure that we can accommodate the parking, and then what happens in the future is still...
Just a thought, for maybe down the road. I would like to see much more happen there than just a garage.
Sure.
And I think it's the perfect spot for it, and I think that we could really maximize that concept and...
Well, Vice Mayor, to your point, Mayor Rich, Nan Rich, talks about those opportunities again and again to promote the whole idea of commuter rail. In her speeches that she has made in the past, this commuter rail system is to hopefully generate affordable housing opportunities along the route. So to your point, this is a perfect example of where an affordable housing project could go with the parking garage for public use and still maximize the real estate that's going, that's right at the station, so...
Mr. Mayor, could I?
Let me just finish my sentence. So really, that's a big point, that maybe that hasn't been really addressed or emphasized by the county commission with you, but I just want you to be aware of that.
Yeah, no, I think it's a great opportunity. I know in Hollywood, if you look at the development they have going on there, I do believe they have some affordable housing as part of that, and a lot of that was generated, you know, with the envisionment of commuter rail.
Okay, could I, actually, could I answer that? Not answer that, but I hate to do this, but Mrs. Toothacre, would you like to come up? I feel like this is the Price is Right, come on down. No, Broward Health and Ms. Toothacre, no, they've been discussing several opportunities exactly like what your, Mr. Vice Mayor, bringing affordable housing to that area. Broward Health was building some things up, and I know you're not here to talk about, I don't want to do a got-to, but I think you love talking about affordable housing. So do you want to mention that, no, answer the questions that, as far as blending affordable housing into the station?
Sure, well, I want to make sure I'm answering the right question. The question was...
Having affordable housing around the station, what's, any be, be thinking about adding affordable housing to, with the station?
Well, actually, my question was, it was even more than that. It was really a real mixed-use project, is I'd like to see, I'd like to see not just a garage, but I would like to see retail, office space, mixed-use, affordable housing. I'd like to see just so much more creativity.
Maximize the real estate.
Exactly, just maximize that site so that it's much more than just in a garage, alternative one or two.
And so...
So let me, let me answer it this way. I think this is where you're, where you're going with Commissioner, and obviously, you're very aware. So we've been working with Broward Health and with the city of Fort Lauderdale on doing a master planning for this area that includes, will include, affordable housing for techs and nurses and whatnot that live, I'm sorry, that work in the hospital. It will also include some other things where we're in the middle of. We almost have sign-offs, actually, for a corporate training center that is right in this area that is being done by Broward Health. They're in expansion mode. They've been working on a lot of different, a lot of, a lot of really exciting and different things that are happening in this area, and we hope at some point it will be a hospital district that will include all the things that you would typically see in other hospital districts throughout the, throughout the United States. And so this is something that Shane Strum has been a visionary on, and we've been working on for quite some time. The city's been great. We've been working through that.
Thank you. And Mr. Vice Mayor, thank you so much, Mr. Vice Mayor. I know that, that...
Vice Mayor.
Not, not Mr. Vice Mayor, okay. Steve, my buddy, hey, bud.
I've been called a lot worse, that's okay.
I know that they, Broward Health has been, like you said, very forward-thinking. They're, no, they're adding some parking there, they have, doing work on their garage. Whatever they do with the garage here, they wanted to be part of that too, because it impacts them, and if you want to add like affordable housing component on top of that, that's something maybe you could bring forward to Broward Health if it's appropriate. Does that, how does that sound?
No, I only raised the entire issue is because I'm just hoping that people that are decision-makers and that are working on this very closely are thinking in that direction and a little bit outside the box. That's why I just raised it.
I think it was a great point. I agree with that. Thank you.
If I may, sir, just to echo what you just said, because it is something that's very important to us as we look at developing this site, what is the best use for the site? We recognize as a county, as the mayor has mentioned, that we need to do our part to identify locations for affordable housing. We are in the NEPA phase right now, which is very much focused on the transportation side of things, but as we go forward, all ideas such as these are definitely on the table, and we're not ruling anything out in the future, or even as part of the initial development, being able to incorporate those commercial uses or affordable housing. In fact, I will tell you that a lot of transit agencies now are looking at ways to incorporate development in the initial stages of any new station. So it is a, is a big deal. And in fact, you know, you'll see locations where you'll have a rail yard, which they would use to look at the aerial rights as just nothing, where you're seeing full commercial buildings and developments going up around. So it is in the, it's in our, it's in our intentions, we just need to get through this phase so we can, you know, figure out how to make that happen.
Understood, and it's great to hear. Thank you so much.
Yes, go ahead, John.
Yep, so all the discussion of Broward South is interesting to me hypothetically. I want to know about Broward North, because that's where my district is, okay? We're not south of the river. I don't care about Ventura, don't care about the airport. What are you doing in my district and getting me up to Palm Beach County?
Well, you should care about everything. I don't know why we...
Mayor, I'm sorry, please, please don't be interrupted.
I don't want us to have that kind of, I don't think we should have that kind of attitude, though. I think that we should really...
Do you understand facetiousness, or are you just that obtuse?
Well, I don't think everyone gets the facetiousness, and the obtuse comment was uncalled for, but thank you.
So what are we doing, what are we doing on the north side of this project? From West Palm down?
So, again, this update, BCR South, I appreciate everybody wanting to go further north. And I, all I can say is that I know that the county is working hard, the city's working hard to find a way to make that happen.
Well, how about just from the north and south? From the north going from Palm, isn't the terminus in West Palm Beach? Isn't there a terminus at West Palm Beach?
It actually goes up to Jupiter. If you think about the 85 miles.
Particularly now that Brightline has already got their station. Because the original, as you referred to, and I've been listening to these presentations going back for the better part of 18 years now, and the original, original plan was Homestead to Jupiter, when we first started talking about the coastal link. And so now that Brightline is building their station up there, my presumption is that will be, you know, the anticipated terminus of the full route, so we can cover, you know, all the way from Martin County all the way down to Homestead again. So the issue for me is, it's great that we're doing the southern part, and I'm glad Miami Dade and Broward have stepped up to start doing that, but I want to make sure that, you know, the northern route also gets done similarly, and my concern is that a lot of this is still hung up on the crossing of the New River, and I don't think it should be. Any more than Miami to South Broward isn't held up on crossing the river. I don't think that north of the river, from Broward to West Palm, should be held up based on getting over, under, or across the river. So I just want to know where that falls into the larger scheme of things.
Yeah, so, you know, and going back in history, I think it was 2014 where the department was trying to move forward a study on the entire corridor. None of the counties had monies, so it just stopped. And then at that point, took a couple of years, but all aboard Florida, now Brightline, you know, came onto the scene. Miami Dade started a PD&E study after they were able to do certain things and get funding in place. Broward County had started to do that shortly after, a couple of years after. Palm Beach County doesn't have that at the moment. They want to, so they haven't progressed to the point to move forward.
Okay, so that's, so that's really sort of the impediment then.
So that's just one of, you know, there's a lot of challenges, but that needs to happen as one of the first things to happen, to go north of Broward.
I get the synergy if Miami Dade was already moving forward, that it makes sense for us to collaborate with them and extend it as far as we can into Broward County to make it as functional as you can, because the further it goes, the more use you'll get out of the system.
Absolutely, absolutely. And Miami Dade and Broward, they've invited Palm Beach to their coordination calls and, you know, because ultimately, it's one service, and they want to make sure all the counties understand decisions that are going to have to be made, maybe ahead of when they're ready to really make them.
And honestly, John, even if we did have a decision with regard to the New River Crossing, I'm not sure how far north we would take it, because Palm Beach County hasn't, isn't ready yet, right? They haven't made the same investment that Miami Dade has made into this, into this project. That's my understanding. Is that correct?
Yeah, they are anxious, though. They indicated that they may have something coming up soon, you know, on their, for voting and so forth, to try and secure some funds. So they're anxious for it.
And that was the information I was trying to get to, Mayor, because, look, we all know that West Palm is booming right now. You know, they're number one of the top destinations for hedge funds relocating out of New York. And so there's a lot of traffic between Fort Lauderdale and West Palm, and I think that's going to continue to grow. You know, Palm Beach is exceptionally wealthy, runs through some very, very high-priced real estate areas. I have no doubt that if they chose to move in this direction, they can certainly afford it. So it's just a matter of understanding where they are in the process, if they're a little bit behind where Miami Dade was, because Miami Dade is perhaps a little bit more transit-oriented in their thought process, and Palm Beach is more vehicular traffic to a great extent. So I just want to kind of understand what those plans are, and then within that, kind of a second question, is how do we talk about where we're going to locate stations? So for example, we're going to do one down on 17th Street at the hospital, and then we're going to do another one at, at the Brightline Station downtown on Broward Boulevard. I've heard some discussions on the northern side that, you know, Oakland Park may be in there, some other things. One of the areas I'd really like to see become part of this conversation is Cypress Creek. We are trying to develop a transit-oriented development overlay district up there to go along with the Tri-Rail Station. So it seems to me that having the Brightline, or I'm sorry, the commuter rail line stop on 17th Street, we've got the track space over there right by North Dixie Highway, I think we could accommodate a station up there. I think that feeds into what we're trying to do with the whole redevelopment and the uptown business plan. So I'd like to know what's the process for trying to get that station in the plans?
So I'm not sure which station you're referring to. I will tell you that...
Haven't they already been decided?
Yeah, the stations have been decided, and it was a cumbersome process, right? Even back when they had 85 miles, they had 100 stations that they were looking at, and they slowly whittle it down, they do a lot of outreach, they do different analysis and so forth, and it gets to where it is. When we started BCR, when we were looking at everything, there was a few stations that still needed to be determined, but they were between point A and, A and B, basically, because if you start adding more stations, you disrupt what you're getting out of commuter rail. If it takes longer to get some places, you're not going to get the ridership. So it's a balancing act. So a lot of stations have potential to be what we call fill-in stations. So once you're up in operational and so forth, and you have the ridership, and you can show that you can accommodate that and not jeopardize the operations, because if you jeopardize operations, you also jeopardize the ridership. So it's a balancing act that you do.
Sure, but we're doing a land use plan amendment specifically designed to create a second business center in Fort Lauderdale. So it seems to me, and again, we already have a Tri-Rail Station there. So if we're trying to create a transit-oriented destination, it seems to me that putting the commuter rail at the same place Tri-Rail is, because you've got your two different feeder lines coming up to the same area, and getting to all the businesses, we've got a plan that's been submitted right now for rezoning that's going to bring 1,000 units up there. I've got five other buildings going up right now that are going to add at least another 1,500 to 2,000 residential units in that one tight area around Cypress Creek Station, you know, where the shopping center is. At some point, Cypress Creek Station is going away, and I'm going to have another 3,000 units up there. I'm going to have 10,000 units of construction in the multifamily residential space in the next 10 years going up there. So, you know, you want to put a station where your, where your young professionals that are more likely to ride transit are going to be. So how do I get that in there? So we're, as you're saying, we're not even at the point where we're building the northern route. We have time to look at the station structure.
Yeah, I think it takes, you know, putting in a request of what you're looking for compared to what's already been determined, right?
So how do I, that's my question. How do we get a request now?
I would direct it to...
Who's the one that determines it?
I would direct it to Broward County.
She just left.
Right.
She heard that question and ran out.
Heard it. Point, well...
Thank you, bye. Thank you so much for your presentation. I appreciate it.
Very much heard what you're saying, and you're absolutely right. If you have that level of density in a location, it makes sense to have some kind of transit, particularly commuter rail would be great, or some other type of transit. Please let us get through this part of it.
Sure.
And we can open up our options to the north now, to the point that, yes, stations have been identified, but there is a potential in the future for infill, right? So you have certain stations, but, you know, just like Phil said, you know, you don't want to have these stations too close together, because you lose the benefits of commuter rail, but you don't want to lose opportunities with very high-density development, so certainly...
Well, it's twofold, you know?
I, I, it's, I got it.
Right. Well, you know, the other thing, too, again, I've been riding subways since I was five years old, so you have express trains, and you've got local trains, so not every train stops at every platform on its way through. So there are going to be certain stations, and I've looked at the stations up there, where I promise you, there's nobody there, and they're only there right now because it's a political request, you know, from a, from a small town up on the northern route, and, you know, you don't want to leave anybody out. I get that. But not every station needs to actually have the same level of service as all the others.
Level of service, no. And you're absolutely right. You do have a lot of locations where you have express and local services. Traditionally, many of those, though, have either three or four tracks. We got two, and we're sharing it with the freights and Brightline. So we just have a little bit of a challenge, but I hear you. You said it today, noted, it's on the list, and we'll look at it as we move forward to the north.
Wonderful, thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else from your team wants to speak? Anyone else from your team wants to speak?
Nope.
Wait, anyone else from your team who wants to speak?
No, sir, we're good.
You're good?
We're good.
All right, yes, Commissioner. Before you go, I think this is more of a question for Phil. John, you brought up something that I was curious about. On the north end, north of the river, I know we already have Pompano, Deerfield, and Oakland Park, I think, identified.
Right.
And Palm Beach County, Jupiter has a station coming online? What's, what do we know about Palm Beach? Have they identified where their stations might be?
So there's some preliminary stations as part of that Tri-Rail Coastal Link study, so they had identified potential stations back in, probably like 2014 since then, right? And that was refreshed for Broward and Miami Dade, and the ones that weren't fully determined, we went through a process of screening and meeting and so forth to get to that point. So right now, we went through that process for all of Broward County, and we were at Oakland Park, Pompano, just north of Atlantic, and then Deerfield, Deerfield Beach.
So is it Atlantic that the station stop is at?
Yeah.
And then, and then it's just Oakland Park?
Just north of Oakland Park.
And not Cypress Creek?
No, that wasn't part of what was screened before, so, but it's not to say that you can't reassess things, right? It's been, it's been a while, and...
But my question was, well, the Oakland Park is just north of Oakland Park Boulevard? Is that where it would be?
It's Oak, north of Oakland Park Boulevard, in their, in their main street area, yeah.
In Palm Beach County, I mean, is Jupiter, have they, they already identified Jupiter as a Brightline station at this point? Or, John, you had mentioned that.
That, that, well, Jupiter was the end of the line for the coastal link. What Brightline does is somewhat independent of what the commuter...
What happened for us? Has commuter rail looked at, are we identifying any stations in Palm Beach County? Or is it way too early to even know what's going on there?
So right now, there's a study done and completed around the 2014 time period for Palm Beach County.
I would think if Brightline builds a station there, that we would probably be able to access that. It would, you know, it would seem, it would seem unlikely that they build a station and...
Not be able to use it for...
Yeah, that would make sense. That would be the local station versus the express.
You want to maximize the utilization of that asset that they're going to spend, you know, millions of dollars on. I'm sure having the commuter rail line stop there would probably be a reasonable expectation.
I just want to add one little nuance to the conversation, please. So we were invited by the Palm Beach NPO to, or TPO, to come up and talk about how they can actually work on a SRTAC. they can actually work on a SRTAX. This happened in the winter of this year. And they invited us, and they invited Miami-Dade, and they're very interested in learning how they can mimic what we, the success that we've had here in Broward in terms of passing a SRTAX. So, that's why we're there. They heard from Miami, Miami told their, you know, their version of it. We learned from Miami, they'll learn from us and Miami. So, they're, like, you know, Phil said, very interested in seeing that, you know, the development happen, but they just really don't have the resources at this time to commit to this. So, it's, so that's one of the reasons why we keep them in the loop, we keep them involved, because we know that it's going to be beneficial, because at the end of the day, we want a regional service. We don't just want it to be one county. It's a tri-county commitment.
Success feeds on success with this. The bigger it is, the more we all benefit.
Yep.
And this is, no, this is kind of fun, because we're talking about the future here. This is actually a very exciting topic. I appreciate you guys being here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. See you guys later.
Phil used more than ten minutes. I just want you to know.
I know. Really? Like, I told him not to do that.
Never, ever being invited back again.
No, no, it was well worth it. Thank you so much.
Okay. Moving on to Business Two, medical plan opt-out compensation analysis. Who will be discussing that? Guy?
Our folks from HR, and I'll let Jerome introduce the team that's here to talk about it.
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners, Jerome Post, Director of Human Resources. I have with me Guy Hein, our risk manager, as well as Christian, Christian from Garing Group, our insurance consultant. This is an item that is being brought back to you from some time ago in which the commission requested additional information. We had Garing go back and do a little bit more research. We do have all the information in your packets with the exhibits. But ultimately, as you know, the city does not currently provide compensation for employees who opt out of the city's health care plan. And the question was, should we? And if so, what would that estimated cost be? You can see that there are currently three hundred and five members, or employees, who are not members of the health plan, who do opt out. Some of the information that you requested as well was comparison to other agencies in South Florida that provide an opt-out. And you can see from your packets that we have about twenty-five agencies that were polled. There are six who currently offer an opt-out that range anywhere from twenty-six hundred dollars per year to about six thousand dollars per year, and those six agencies are listed for you. In order to give you an estimate of what that cost would be, we ran some scenarios, not knowing quite what the conversion rate would be for those employees who are currently on the plan that would opt to take that opt-out compensation and go off the plan. Because the other agencies were not able to provide us very much information regarding their opt-out or their conversion rates when they established their opt-out plans, we had to run those scenarios for you, providing the rates for all six agencies with twenty-five employees, fifty employees, seventy-five employees, and a hundred employees opting out of the plan. I personally doubt there would be a hundred employees opting out, but just to give you that data and information, and then open it up for discussion for you. If you have particular questions, as I said, I do have staff here available for us. If I can't answer them, I'm sure we can have somebody that can. Thank you.
Okay. First of all, any questions by anybody? Okay, Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, Jerome, thank you for that. Let me ask you a question. So, you told us that out of twenty, well, three hundred and five current city employees do not take advantage of the health benefit, correct?
That is correct.
And that's out of twenty, what is it, about twenty-eight hundred?
Right. I think we have the total number of employees that are in the plan.
It looks like, yeah, at a-
At least it's not in our plan.
Well, two thousand are eligible, seventeen fifty-nine-
Right.
Are enrolled in a health plan, and three hundred and five are not.
Correct.
Do we know why people opt out and do not have health insurance through the city?
Typically, it would be because they're on another health plan. Either their spouses, or parents, or what have you. They do have insurance somewhere else.
They have it somewhere else. And the city pays per employee that's enrolled in a health plan, the city pays approximately seventeen thousand dollars a year, correct?
Correct.
Okay. For people that opt out, people that don't have health insurance through the city and have it somewhere else, the city contributes how much to the health plan for those people?
The city does not contribute for those employees.
Right. So, the city does not contribute the seventeen thousand dollars a year.
Correct.
Okay. Now, I see that staff has proposed, on the low end, you're proposing, or it looks like the hypothetical is a hundred dollars a paycheck.
Correct. That would be at the lowest rate that our comparator agencies offered. And that was the twenty-six hundred with Broward County.
Broward County pays a hundred dollars a paycheck to folks that do not have health insurance through the county.
Correct.
And it goes all the way up to the city of Lourdes Hill, that pays two hundred and thirty-one dollars roughly a paycheck to people that opt out.
Correct.
Why have those cities and the county chosen to pay? Now, obviously, that doesn't come anywhere near the seventeen thousand dollars per employee that the city or the county contributes on behalf of a person who's enrolled in a health care plan, correct?
Correct.
So, why do cities choose to do that on opt-out?
Well, there's several reasons the cities might do that. One would be through collective bargaining processes that they would work out with their, the unions that they have. They may also take the philosophy to heart that suggests that there would be less use of the plan by those members who decide to opt out, and then theoretically providing some level of savings to the plan because of that.
Probably over time. I mean, I would imagine that maybe those savings wouldn't be realized in the short term, but perhaps over the long term. Now, I noticed that you gave us a lot of information about Coconut Creek. So, have we been able to analyze, how many years has Coconut Creek been providing an opt-out benefit to those not taking health insurance?
Well, I would have to ask for Garing to step up and see if we have that information.
So, I can actually weigh in a little. I know Coconut Creek has historically had a, what's it, a cafeteria plan, so where they provide X number of dollars and employees can pick, oh, I want this much life insurance, I want health insurance, et cetera. So, the city of Coconut Creek is basically giving this pool. People can buy the benefits that they want, and that they could use the remainder in cash. And they've had that cafeteria plan in place, I think, thirty-plus years, a long time.
Okay. For me, and I'm glad you're coming back with this additional information, because I remember the first time we had this discussion a while ago. For me, this is an issue that's very similar to an issue that we'll talk about later with regards to cost of living increase for retired employees. For me, this is about equity and fairness. It's also about making sure that we treat every employee equally. If as a city, we are going to spend seventeen thousand dollars a year on an employee for health insurance, and for some reason, an employee says, you know, I have insurance through my spouse or my significant other, and I choose not to, that's a big chunk of change that we're not spending on behalf of the employee. So, to offer a hundred dollars a paycheck at the low end, and two hundred and thirty, like Lourdes Hill does, at the high end, to me, is all about equity. It's all about recognizing that if benefits are going to be contributed for one employee, then I believe those kinds of benefits should be contributed to all employees. It's an issue of fairness and parity to me. And I understand there might be some short-term costs, but I don't fear that people are going to all of a sudden rush to opt out of a plan where they're getting seventeen thousand dollars in benefits just because you're going to give them a hundred dollars a paycheck. I mean, that doesn't make any sense at all to me.
You're saying a hundred dollars a paycheck, so that's-
Twenty-six hundred a year.
That's twenty-six hundred a year times three hundred and how many employees?
Well-
Twenty-six hundred-
Three hundred and five.
Times-
It's about seven hundred thousand a year?
It's about seven hundred thousand a year. Now, you're saying that that doesn't amount to a lot of money?
No, no, no. You're missing my point. My point is, I said that I don't think people are going to opt out of health, of getting health insurance, because you're going to say, okay, here's a hundred dollars a paycheck. You're not going to opt out of health insurance unless they have coverage, because if you look at all of the cities in the county, and I think that's something that we would have to consider, the condition is that you have to, you have to substantiate that you have health coverage, which is very important. We want to make sure that people have coverage. So, what I'm saying is not a lot of money is, to offer someone a hundred dollars a paycheck, which is what the county does, that's the low end of the cities and the county that provide that, that's not an incentive to me to opt out. But it does recognize that you are at least giving someone some benefit because you're paying seventeen thousand dollars in a benefit to everybody else. So, I think, again, it's just a matter of being fair, and I also, I also believe that, you know, we received a report recently, on May twenty-eighth, we received a report about vacancies in our city. As of April thirtieth, we have two hundred and eighty-six vacant positions in our city. That represents ten point one-six percent of our full-time employees. So, this, to me, is just, it's not huge, but it's just another small, little thing that you're saying, hey, come work for Fort Lauderdale, and here's just one other thing that we are going to offer, just in case you might have health insurance coverage through your spouse, or your significant other, or whatever else, or you have a better plan. We want to recognize that we want to give you that benefit. I know, I have more to say. I definitely want to hear how everyone else feels. But for me, again, if you're going to be extending benefits, benefits are, to me, as important as salary. If you're going to be extending benefits to people, then you should be extending benefits to all employees, not just some.
If I can weigh in on that, please?
Yes, go ahead.
My thought about this, this is a benefit that is offered, and an employee has a choice to opt in or opt out. We're already offering the benefit for insurance, whether they need it or not. If they choose to opt out, where does that require or suggest that we need to give them some type of a compensation for choosing to opt out?
Well, good question.
Well, I'm not, I'm not-
That's the way I'm perceiving it.
No, I understand. And that makes, that makes perfect sense. I'm just saying that it puts us on record, just like I'm hoping that eventually we have another discussion down the road about paid family leave. It's all, it's all a philosophy. It's all a package. It's all what the city stands for. It's all a way to attract the best and the brightest as employees, and it's a very small-
We have the best and the brightest.
But we also have a ten percent vacancy rate, Mayor.
And then also with that, you know, last year, I suggested that we look at including June sixteenth, Juneteenth, as a national holiday direct-
June nineteenth, June nineteenth.
Juneteenth.
Juneteenth, right.
Juneteenth.
Right.
As a national holiday, as the, it is federally recognized. That same money that we're talking about now could go towards acknowledging that as a holiday for everyone, giving an additional holiday for those who come, become employees for the city, an additional benefit.
I don't see that as an either-or choice.
Well, before, we were told we couldn't afford it. That's why we didn't go any further last year with the conversation.
Well, it took me, it took me six years to be able to get the city to celebrate President's Day.
I understand, but it shouldn't be a pattern.
And I was happy to be successful there.
It shouldn't be a pattern.
It should be a pattern. I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you, but I just think that, you know, to me, employee choice and satisfaction is very important. If you provide an opt-out option, and you recognize that by giving a small dollar amount, you are giving the employee that, not only that flexibility, but you're letting them tell you what better suits their needs. Does the city's plan better suit their needs, or does their spouse or significant other, or whatever, how else they're getting coverage, does that, does that actually suit their needs? Because I think that if you look at the cities that have been doing this, that bi-weekly, you know, I guess you can call it not really an incentive, but it's definitely a compensation. I think that that's a positive going down the road. I think it also, if it actually increases, then you would see the city's costs decrease when it comes to that. So, to me, it is also about fiscal responsibility. It's also about efficiency. It's basically aligning all of our strategic goals. This is what we talk about in terms of fiscal responsibility. We talk about efficient resource organization. We talk about all of these things in our plans, whether it's Press Play Fort Lauderdale, Strategic Plan, Fast Forward, Twenty Thirty-Five Vision Plan. These are the concepts that all of these plans actually talk about. Again, is it the end-all and be-all? No. But I think it just says, look, if the person sitting next to you is getting seventeen thousand dollars a year in benefits, but because you have a better plan, we have to recognize it. Or, let us work on creating a better plan in Fort Lauderdale. Let us work on creating plans that are more efficient. Let's work on plans that are somehow more cost-efficient. But I don't think that it's fair, that's all, and I'm not going to repeat myself over and over and over, but I just don't think it's fair that if you're going to give someone seventeen thousand dollar benefit a year, that the person sitting next to them gets zero. And you can't penalize them for saying, hey, I have a better plan. You should reward them for not making you spend seventeen thousand dollars a year to cover them for health insurance. So, it's not, to me, a punishment or anything like that, but you are at least recognizing that everyone's getting a benefit. That's all.
Can I ask a question? Jerome, where would that money be coming from? A hundred dollars a paycheck? Would that be coming out of the plan?
That would come out of the plan for us, yes.
Okay, that does make a difference. Okay, think about this. It's coming out of the plan.
And they're not paying into it.
No. So, what happens is, by definition, I guess it was mentioned before, people who have opted out have health, have health coverage. So, they've opted out, they're getting good health coverage. The people that are still in the plan, that money in the plan is to buy them health coverage. So, what's happening is, you're going to be taking a hundred dollars per paycheck out of the plan, so you're going to be harming the people that have health coverage, but the other people already have health coverage to begin with. So, I think it would be undermining, you know, you see where I'm getting at from that. I mean, John- I think you're suggesting, so what I think you're suggesting, Warren, is that everybody that's in the plan now effectively is going to be subsidizing that hundred-dollar payment to the folks that are getting that additional remuneration. So, I think we have a bit of a misnomer here. So, let's start with the fact that the city is self-insured, okay? So, it's not a seventeen thousand dollar benefit to the individual. What happens is, the actuaries come along, they look at the entire experience rating for the entire group, which includes active employees and retirees that continue to participate in the city's plan under Florida statute that allows retirees to stay in the plan. The bigger the group, the larger the group, the more we diversify our experience. There's a concept called adverse selection, which means that those people that are more inclined to need health care services use more of it. Younger and healthy people, given an opportunity, we saw this with Obamacare, choose not to enroll. That's why there was an enforcement mechanism that forced people to pay when you did your taxes, because young, healthy people didn't participate. So, insurance works best when it's spread amongst the largest group of participants. We don't want to encourage people to leave the plan. That makes the plan worse off. So, that seventeen thousand dollars is the actuarially determined amount that we put in per employee. It doesn't mean every employee is incurring seventeen thousand dollars' worth of cost. Some people incur none. Some older folks like myself that spend more time over at the wellness center spend a little bit more. Anybody that has a dread disease is costing us hundreds of thousands of dollars. We have stop-loss policies on those, too. So, there's a variety of ways that we manage our plan to keep costs down for everybody. But when we pay this, unless you're proposing that we just take this out of the general fund and pay it that way, which would be a different instance, in that case, it's, you know, strictly additional compensation. But I don't think we should be taking this out of the health care plan. I don't think the health insurance fund should be covering this cost, because that just puts the burden back on the employees that contribute to the cost of their plan, as well as the city that comprises the bulk of the plan. Again, you know, we as commissioners, we don't contribute for the cost of our plans. That's one of the benefits we get. But every employee is paying bi-weekly for the cost of their plan, depending on which plan they choose, whether it is the cash plan, which gives them, I think it was seven hundred and fifty dollars at the beginning of the year, and then you have the lowest premium, or you go for the Cadillac plan, and you could be spending hundreds of dollars a month as a single employee, and substantially more than that for a family plan. So, anything we do that increases the cost burden on the rest of the employees, I'm not in favor of.
So, John, I think you actually came up with a very good point, as I'm thinking. If we have a financial incentive to opt out, I mean, a hundred dollars, but any financial, and the only person who would do that is the young, healthy people, you're now selecting the more sick people to stay in the plan, and that cost per person goes up because you're going to get a pool of people that are sicker, that, is that sort of what you're getting at to some degree?
That's typically, within the larger, and I don't want to be specific about the study that we've done on this case, but in general, yes, that's how insurance works. So, people who don't need insurance don't buy it. People who need insurance buys it. The larger the group that you spread the costs out on, the cheaper it is for everybody. Small groups, very expensive. Big groups, cheaper in general. Diverse populations, cheaper in general than narrow populations. So, a bunch of elderly, sick individuals, high experience rating. A broad population that includes a mix of ethnicities and ages and genders are going to have a completely different ratio of cost consumption. Women typically consume more of maternity care and things like that. Older individuals have more care for heart, cholesterol, hypertension. There's a broad breakdown of how different groups of folks are going to utilize health care services. Some of it's culturally driven, some of it is economically driven. And so, the more diverse your group is, the more you spread that experience across that, the lower the cost is for everybody.
So, we don't want unintended consequence of increasing financial burden on the people who remain in the plan, is the bottom line.
who remain in the plan, is the bottom line?
Well, again, again, this $17,000 is a, is a made-up number. It's not a real number, because we're self.
But the employee has a match to that, right?
Because we're self-insured. So we just, we just come up with a number that equates to the total amount of expense of the, of the health plan, divided by the number of employees, and we come up with a number.
Yeah, but definitely, that employees have, Susan, employees have a match, I mean, they put into the plan, too, correct?
That is correct.
Right, which means that if the cost goes up, their part goes up, too.
But now we're siphoning off, if you want to give money to the, those that don't opt in, they're siphoning money out of the plan, which they never contributed to. So, you know, it's a, it's a misnomer to say that they're saving us $17,000 by not joining the plan. It's not a real number.
No, I agree with that. I, yes, I, we agree.
Yeah, just a couple of things on the 17. It's an average. So if you look at, you know, as you said, we're self-insured, so it's total claims divided by the number. And the $17,000 for those three oh five that are currently not enrolled, we're not paying that, we're not budgeting that. So, I mean.
It's just a lot of money, 700 something thousand, we'd have to take out of the, I, I just, I mean, I get the, I get the idea of fairness and equity and all of that, but I think when, when you get down to the reality of the situation, I just don't think it makes sense, and I think we consistently recognize that. I don't think I could support a change in our policy today.
Jerome, is it possible to find out how it's going in those, I guess it's Lauderdale, Miramar, Daniel Beach, Coconut Creek, Deerfield Beach, and Broward County? I mean, I'd like to know maybe how long they've had these policies. Do they find, what's the data behind it? I mean, is it working for them? Have they noticed? What I'm really curious to know is, over time, have they noticed that the number of employees on their plan has been reduced to the, to the point where they can actually use those kinds of funds perhaps more effectively across other departments and services that the city would provide? I mean, I want to know if they've seen a reduction over time with the opt-out policies.
Well, let me ask Christian if he has that data currently, or some anecdotal information anyway?
It would be anecdotal, because I don't believe any of the agencies are tracking how the metrics of people opting out are. But I will say a majority of those agencies are fully insured. And so when you're fully insured and you have an opt-out benefit, they're actually saving premium dollars. So they're not paying the insurance company for those individuals not enrolling. So they actually are saving money by having those people not select the plan.
Exactly. But aren't we, aren't we fully insured?
No, you're self-insured.
Always self-insured. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So the fewer people that are in the plan, the more we save.
Right. But so let me ask you a question. What is the reason that we chose not to go in that direction? Why are we not fully insured?
The price?
Well, okay, well, I'm just trying to get.
Typically, an organization of your size is, is self-insured.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, I, I would just like to maybe know a little bit more about how it's going in those other governmental entities that have been doing this for a while. So you're telling me that they're all fully insured, all six of them?
No, sir.
Oh, they're not?
The majority.
With the exception of the county. I mean, the county is self-insured as well, which might be why they have the lowest subsidy of that hundred dollars.
Correct. They're a hundred dollars. So the county's self-insured and the other five are fully insured.
I can't speak to the others. I do know the county is self-insured.
Okay. Maybe just, obviously, we're not voting on anything today, we're not changing any policies, but I am curious and being as educated about this as possible, because I, I do hear things, and I'd like to just know a little bit more. But that's, again, for discussion another day.
Also, to your point, I'm wondering, you know, what the percent of vacancies there are in these other cities. If you, if you're, you're suggesting that giving this bonus to those who opt out has, may have increased their retention rate, I'd be curious to know what their vacancy rate is in each of the cities that have this policy. Might be interesting to, if you think 10% is, you know, if our number's 10% vacancies, then I'd be curious to know what these other cities are that have the $260, you know, premium. So, anyway.
I think it's just always good to be as educated as possible, that's all. It's always interesting to see what other governmental entities do, how employees are treated. But thank you, I appreciate, I appreciate the information and the work. It was, it was very helpful.
So Ryan, you've signed up to speak?
Yes, sir. You want to come up? From Local 765, the Fort Lauderdale Professional Firefighters. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Speaking on behalf of Local 765, Fort Lauderdale Professional Firefighters. President Baines out of town at a convention. I am the treasurer for Local 765. Today, we're going to oppose this item, agenda, and speak against it. I'll echo some of what the commission has already spoke on. It doesn't make sense to divert funds out of this plan in order to benefit people that aren't in it, then divert some of the benefits that members who are in, out. So for that, you know, it doesn't make sense to do that. Commissioner Glassman, thank you for, I quote you as saying, let's, let's work on making the current plan better. So thank you for that. It kind of begs the question, you know, why, why are employees opting out of our health insurance? Is it the cost? Is it the benefits? I think we need to do better research on why they are opting out, see what that percentage of, of people who are opting out, figure out why. Ask them. See what their plans are, what benefits do they have that we don't, and what costs do they have that we don't. Let's try to get a full 100% buy-in from everyone in every department. So I'll finish with this. Let's increase the benefits to make the health plans more valuable benefit to our current members. Let's not pay people to opt out, but make the plan something that they can afford to never opt out of.
Okay.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you so much.
I have a question for you, and I appreciate you coming here today and expressing all of this. Do you ever sit down, I, I know that the FOP, the police union, they have a little bit of a different approach to this, and I know that they have, that they manage their health insurance differently than your union does. Have you ever collaborated with them or figured out why they're able to make work what they make work? And, I mean, I'm just wondering what those kinds of discussions maybe have been, or is it worth even having those discussions, sitting down? Because I know that theirs is a very different situation than yours.
I'm sure we have, and I'm sure we probably have to have further conversations, but I think insurance kind of gets pushed down, gets bogged down by either contract negotiations, other items. But yes, I think it's a good idea to do that.
Because I think they have a much more hands-on approach. I think they, well, they have a different plan than the city, right?
Yes.
They have, we have Cigna, they have something, United, and they manage their.
Yeah. And just as an FYI, the new contract that we signed with the fire union has that they have the ability to opt out with a one-year notice and, and a process if they, if they chose to go that same route. So they have that option, again, with adequate amount of time of notice to the city.
Okay, that's excellent. Again, my intention here and my comments here, I don't want them to be misconstrued that I want to see anybody or anyone's plan hurt. What my goal is, is to make sure that we have the best possible plans for everyone, that employees are taken care of as well as they can be taken care of, and at the same time, making sure that all employees are treated with equality. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Any further questions? Okay, there being none. Thank you so much, we appreciate it. Moving on to Business Three, Discussion of Florida House Bill.
Do we, do we need to take a consensus?
No, there's no vote.
Or no, they don't need direction or anything?
No.
Okay.
Florida Discussion of House Bill 601, Citizen Review Panels. Who wishes to? No, you just turned yourself off. There you go.
There you go. This is my first time here. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor Commissioners. Julie Steinhardt, I am the city's police legal advisor, and I am here to talk about House Bill 601 that was recently passed, that will go into effect July 1st, 2024, as it relates to citizen review panels. The clicker? No? There you go. Thank you. Okay, so, the passing of the bill states that political subdivisions may not adopt or attempt to enforce any ordinance relating to either the receipt, processing, or investigation of complaints of misconduct by law enforcement or correctional officers. Citizen oversight of law enforcement agencies, investigation of complaints of misconduct by law enforcement or correctional officers. Okay, so that tells us what we cannot do anymore. What we can do is the chief of the agency, so Chief Schultz, if he chooses, can establish a civilian oversight board, but it is limited to the review of policies and procedures of his office and subdivision. And the composition of the board, the board must be composed of at least two, three, and up to seven members appointed by the chief of police, and it shall be made up of one retired law enforcement officer. Okay? And that is short and simple, short and sweet. Does anybody have any questions about this?
Any questions? We have, I, I mean, I think that we have been talking about this at length amongst, within our community. I know I have. It completely eviscerates a longstanding policy and practice that we have here in our city. I know our community has always relied upon it as a way to give feedback to the police department with regard to officer conduct, and now the state legislature has taken that away from the community. So we have one person who signed up to speak, Mark Dickerman. I know he's, I think you remember the board, Mark. And so, does anyone have any questions at this point?
Do you know what prompted this? What was the, was there an incident or, why was this bill brought forth?
Lobbyists.
Well, there wasn't an incident or something happened or anything?
Are you lobbyist? Yes.
Okay, there being no one? So, Mark, you want to come up? Thank you.
Mark Dickerman, Fort Lauderdale Citizen, Vice Chair of the Citizens Police Review Board, former Chair of the Citizens Police Review Board. Myself, I think, and Mr. Walters have served the longest on the board. The board was pre, was, was a, was a result of incidents in Commissioner Beasley's district. They created this board, and the board since the mid-'90s has done some fabulous work. This law is from the state that's supposed to be the most transparent state in the world. We're losing a lot of transparency, and this is one of them. So knowing that, there's nothing really that any of you can do, my suggestion to the board, to the commission, rather, is to, since the chief makes the actual appointments, but I'd like to see the board still in the loop, I might suggest that in, for that board, for the chief, that each commissioner submit one or two or three names to the chief, that, to, excuse me, to the city manager. Because I know you cannot talk to, to employees, to the city manager, let the city manager forward that to the chief, and allow that, for the chief to have that insight as to who the board would prefer to see on the board.
Which completely violates the statute.
Does it really?
Yeah.
How?
Well, read the statute. It says that we're not allowed to interfere with the selection process.
You're not allowed to interfere, okay.
And the chief is allowed to, allowed to select his own committee, and only to discuss policies and procedures, not with regard to any individual officer's conduct. So that completely eviscerates the whole point. It was, and that, that organize, and that committee, which was originally known as the Citizen Police Review Board, and now, and then it was Police Review Board, and then back to Citizen Police Review Board. That was started because of incidents in the Northwest, as well within the LGBT community, which pushed for this, because of, because of harassment that, that some members of the community felt that they suffered, and it was a great opportunity for the city of Fort Lauderdale to set an example for even other cities in trying to work with our police department to ferret out bad conduct. So we, luckily, we haven't had a whole lot of incidents. I, myself, was on that board for five years, and chair for two. And, you know, our police department has been great all these many years, for the most part, and, and so, that doesn't mean we shouldn't have it, but the state decided we can't, so.
And I.
Nice try, Mark.
I know. I mean, I, I have, when asked about Fort Lauderdale, I always tell them that we have a 98% of officers that are good, and do their job, and do their job professionally and properly. So I'm very proud of our police department as well. I live across the street from the current process. I love watching it, I love watching the new building go up. I can't wait to watch the old one come down. But if any of you got a board position open, I'm, I'm available July 1st.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
We could have our city attorney just to elaborate a little bit more.
Sure.
So that our neighbors will truly understand.
Yeah. Explain a little bit about what the statute does, if you don't mind.
Well, basically, the statute preempted us from having any sort of review board where the citizens can go ahead and review discipline of officers. So after we go through the discipline process in the department, and the decision is made how to, or if to, whether to discipline somebody, then it, after that, it goes to the, the citizens' review panel, where they go ahead and review it, and they make a decision whether they concur with the findings of the police department, if they do not concur with the findings of the police department, and then whether they agree with the level of discipline that the police department has decided to give. Then after that, it goes to the city, to the city manager for a final, for a final yes or no on, on the discipline and whether to enforce it or not. So that, so this will completely eliminate that, and will allow, if the chief so chooses, to go ahead and have a, a panel, but only to review existing police policy and to give recommendations.
In my conversation on, yesterday with my agenda briefing, I asked a question about, of course, the transparency, being able to stay in that, that window of transparency. Where or what can we do after these reviews have been made? Can we have a open opportunity where those items that have been reviewed, that it is posted, it is given to the community, so we know that, yes, there was a investigation, this is the result of the investigation, and even what, if any, discipline or training was applied? Are we able to do that?
Well, the, the League of Cities met recently, and the deputy, the deputy attorney for the League of Cities, and believes that there is an express preemption of us creating any sort of group outside of the statute that, that reviews these, that is sanctioned by the city. So with that express preemption, the city, we don't believe that the city would be allowed to organize any group. However, these records are available under Chapter 119 to citizens absent any confidential information that's inside, but we don't believe that the city could sanction any sort of, of group. We believe that would be in violation of the statute.
Well, to her point, can we, can we see what is going on in Internal Affairs, or, well, for example, Internal Affairs, or the Office of Professional Standards that relate to police officers? Are those, are those records available for public view?
After the investigation is over?
After the investigation's over.
Correct.
All right. So after the investigation is over, and city attorney also, if you could weigh in and help us understand this, just as a scenario, HOA Civic Association meeting, they request to offer our police chief or someone from PD to come out and talk about or reveal, discuss case number ABC. Are we able to do that in a form of transparency?
We don't believe so, under the League of, the League of Cities and the group collective that has decided that we're preempted from sanctioning any such activity. When HOH so chooses to do that on their own, they could request the documents under Chapter 119 and have their own meeting, but it couldn't be anything that was sanctioned by department or allowed by the department.
So, so, from what I can understand, there's no interpretation, in a sense, of the findings.
Current.
Okay. God bless you.
I'll weigh in there, Commissioner. Yes. We are recommending, as most cities are to their clients, to strictly abide by what this statute says, which is absolute preemption, which we're all dealing with, and I, as you know, in every year with the legislature on, different preemptions. This is a tough one, because it's so precise and so strict. So as Julie's pointing out, once a case is concluded, whether it's in Internal Affairs or any other public record, it's a public record. Anybody can look at it and wishes to, in HOA, they can go back through it and report back to the police chief or the city manager, we're not happy with this, but there's nothing that could happen as a result of it, other than to report that dissatisfaction. They will be public records.
Thank you.
Okay. Mayor, are we able to hear from the department? Are there any plans or for any kind of review panel or chief? I mean, you know the statute, you know the new law, I mean, what are we doing?
It's just for policies and procedures.
I understand, but, but are we, are we anticipating anything or not?
Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor Commissioners, Bill Schultz, Chief of Police. At this time, we still have another month, this month, of meetings. We have two meetings coming up to complete before sunset, so we want to get those meetings taken care of. Once the month is done, the board is dissolved, then we're going to look at what the other options are.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Since these documents, I know they're, they're sometimes very extensive, but they're very complete, the documents that we receive. I know when you were on the board, you received a book like this. Now it comes electronically.
Right.
So is it possible to set up a, set up a page on the website, on the Fort Lauderdale website, to post the public records, once, once they're made public, so that any citizen can review it?
After the investigation is done?
Yes.
What are your thoughts?
So after the investigation is over, they do become public records, however, it would have to be requested, the specific records would have to be requested, because we go through, and we have to make appropriate redactions for confidential information that is contained within those. And then sometimes, when they're lengthy, that is quite time consuming.
This law sucks. Can I say it in record?
For the record, this law sucks.
Well, you know what, Mark? At some point in time, you can pursue that on your own and just see how-
I'm working with NACO right now.
Yeah. Because I don't know if there's, I don't know if there's an actual answer to that question. So, and different cities are responding in different ways, so we'll just see how it works out. All right?
One of the reasons that they put this law in is because there are some cities that have subpoena- I'm sorry, the reason they put the law, they, they passed this law in the first place is because the, there are some boards in the state that have subpoena powers, which we did not have, so.
Well, one size doesn't fit all, but they seem to think it did, so. All right. Any further questions? Okay, thank you so much for your presentation.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, Business Four, Inter Miami Parking Discussion. I think where we last left off, city staff was going to get back to us as to how much money was being collected, and was there an opportunity for the city to perhaps earn more money out of the money that was being collected? And I, and I, and I got a summary. Did everyone get that summary? Okay.
We, we did, but Mayor, you may recall at that meeting, I asked for the city auditor to review and opine on whatever documentation was provided by the team. So I'd like to hear from Pat first.
Yep.
Pat.
Yes, I received the summary report on Friday, and I took a look at it, and basically, it was, it was based on, on an average of eight games, and the attendance of the eight games, and I took a look at it, and, but as I also looked at the, the contract, our, our share of what goes on with the parking is basically, the first hundred vehicles, there's no charge, and it's $10 for each car after that. So for the city, I think the, the important thing more is the verification of, of the parking. And I think in order to, to verify the number of cars parked, you know, from my, from my standpoint, you need the reports from Park Mobile, Ticketmaster, and SP Plus. So as far as the expenditures, what occur, is, is really not an issue for us, since we're basing it on just, on the $10 a car. I, I looked at it and saw the parking, and like I said, it came out to like, an average of 1,802 vehicles per game, and it comes out to $38.45 a car, and the net example on the average of eight prod, of eight vehicles is, is a net profit of $35,000. And the split for the city is 18,020 in this example, and 1737 for the, the Inter Miami. But again, one of the things in the contract, when, when I was looking at it, if the $100 is taken out of the parking, the first 100 cars is taken out of the, the grand total, then our scenario in this, with the eight vehicles, would have been 17,000 to the, to the city, and the, Inter Miami would have be making the 18,000, which kind of reversed what the, the average price we would be getting. We would be getting the 945 versus the 10, it would be reversed. And again, I was kind of wondering why we wouldn't have used like, all of the, the games to date. I think there was like, up to now, there's like 13 games, but, and I would have rather gone with the, the actual of each game, but I, I see what, the scenario is how you did with an average, but I, I kind of think, you know, from, from an audit standpoint, this is, would have been better just to have the, as I said earlier, the reports from the, the companies that are actually doing the, the parking, and you're getting the information, the number of cars parked from that, is, is a source document that I would like to, to look at, based on, you know, the actual, rather than using an average of eight, eight. So that's kind of my, my point, I was thinking too.
If I then, so then, two questions around that. So if I understand you, and this is based on our conversations as well. So the supporting documentation was not provided. You simply have a summary statement prepared by the team? There's no underlying documentation that substantiates the revenue or the expense figures? Is that, is that accurate?
Correct.
Okay. So therefore, you're really unable to form an opinion about the accuracy of, of what's been provided to you?
Correct.
So far, so far, thank you, yeah.
My second question, you had mentioned to me that there were three games that were not accounted for?
Well, there, there was really a couple of the earlier games that were like Iceland versus a couple, but there was six altogether that weren't listed here. I mean, as of, before the, the last Wednesday game of May 29th, it, it covered the last, DC United was the last game on the list, so there was, by that time, there was 15, 15 games played, and the first four were, were not, they were like-
A scrimmage game?
Yeah, they were, no, they were like Honduras versus Iceland.
Exhibition games, yeah.
Yeah.
They weren't Inter Miami.
But, but, but Mayor, it's Inter Miami playing an exhibition game, though, so-
Are they?
If they're parking there, it's, it doesn't matter whether it's a league game or not, they're using the, they're using the parking facility.
Well, can I, can I add one thing?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Is, you know, one of the, one of the other things, and the contract said that payments could be made after July 1st, but there are, have been, there have been payments made up to date, so there was payment on, on, on some of those games, so, but I'm just saying the analysis only had eight, eight of the games, not the 15 up to this point in time before May 29th. And, you know, as I was looking at it, the one option I thought maybe in the future would be to have an audit clause in there, so we periodically could, could check the attendance. And the other thing, maybe, you know, rather than using parking concession numbers, would be maybe to have just a lease for the, the land, and just based on the last two years and this year's activity, just to make it simple, to have just one lease payment a year for the, for the property, rather than by car, but that's just an observation I made from the, from the current contract.
So just to, let me just see if I can clarify this for myself. So is there, are you still looking to, to pursue actual numbers by contacting the vendors who themselves are operating the parking facility?
Well, well, that would, unless it would be the, the wishes of, of the commission, I'm just saying that I, I can't really substantiate the numbers just from this.
I get that, I get that, okay. I have Stephanie Toothacre and Chris Smith here. Did you want to add to this presentation? Why don't you, could you put the mic on?
Stephanie Toothacre, on behalf of Inter Miami, I would just say, we're, we're happy to answer any questions. This is the same information that we have, so I'm not, I, I'm not, I don't have anything more than what I had sent to Mr. Riley.
Okay.
Do we lose any money? Does it cost us anything at these games, or, or, like, the police and all that stuff? You, you, you pick up the cost of-
We pay, Inter Miami pays for all of that. They pay for the police, they pay the vendors, they pay the city.
How about the ones on the intersections that are off-site, too? You pay for all of that?
That's all paid for by Inter Miami.
So, so if you look at the numbers, if you, if, if, based on their, the numbers that they've given us, okay, it looks like there's, there is a net profit, and we kind of split it. And, and, and so is there any room for the city to get any more of that net profit, is really the question? And I think that's what you brought up last night.
That's correct, Mayor, so let me, let me put out my suggestion. So obviously, you all know I'm not in favor of this to begin with, but if we're going to move forward, if it's the will of the commission to move forward, then I think we simply need a more equitable arrangement. So my, my proposal would be that we double, as, as I said, so I understand the tickets are 50, and then going up to, parking is 50 and going up to 70, so this is what I've been told. The, my suggestion is that we take it from the $10 a car to $20 a car, which I don't think is unreasonable, it's still less than we charge for special event parking. The second part of it that I'm actually very troubled by is the first 100 cars free. I've been told that this is for press and security and so forth. And I think that 100 cars that they're providing to people for free should come out of their 900 space parking lot that they already own. If they want to give out free parking to folks, I'm fine with that, but there's no reason for the city to be providing that free parking. That free parking ought to come off of their 900 spaces. So my suggestion is we eliminate the 100 free spaces. And the third part that I think is, was actually kind of surprising to me, is that there's no accountability in the contract in terms of a right to audit. Pat Riley needs to be able to go in there, just like we do with all of our, every other contract that we have is a right to audit in it. I was very surprised that this one does not have a right to audit in it, and I think that's an oversight. Certainly, that's the kind of thing that we've been dinged by the Office of the Inspector General for in the past. You may recall when we've been written up and, and taken to task for not having a right to audit clause in our contracts. So I think if we're going to move forward with this, I think we need a more equitable split on the cash. Again, I would, I would propose $20 a car. I think we eliminate the 100 free cars, because again, that's, that's their choice to provide free parking, and that should come out of their 900 spaces. And then the third aspect is, there, there needs to be, there needs to be variability, verifiability. As Ronald Reagan said, trust but verify. And so we need to have a right to audit clause in it. I, I think it's, it's unconscionable to me that we don't, that's just poor internal controls.
All right, anyone have any thoughts on this?
Well, I don't know, very verbal today, I don't know why. What we average per game aggregate, I mean, is it the same number of game after game, or does it go up and down? I mean, not per car, but total number that we get out of it. Pat, do you have that number?
So you want to know what the-
The total number that we get per, because she would say something that I'm going to ask about.
They, they worked it out with an eight game, and so, in eight games, it was 14,416 parked cars, and when you average it, it comes out 1,802 cars per game.
And how, dollar wise, how much, how much dollar do we get?
Well, the, the dollar of that is like $69,295 for, for the, for the activity of, on the average of eight car, eight games.
So like $8,000 a game?
Well, I mean, they have expenditures, the routine sales tax, credit cards, parking, barricades, police lighting, and, and the net profit is $35,000. And then we get $10, $10 a car, less the first 100, and it was, it's 18,000, and the rest goes to the, to Inter Miami.
Okay, let me throw up something that you mentioned. What's, what's the appetite for discharging a flat rate per game? Just lease it to them? I mean, with the dollar amount, you could debate, but to keep it simple, is that something that does make sense, doesn't make sense? I don't know. I'm not saying-
From, from an administrative perspective, I think it's cleaner to just come up with a flat rate, because then I don't care how many cars are parked there. We, we still have the issue of the complaints that I get of gouging, because unfortunately, people think that, that's the city's parking lot. And so I've had a lot of people complain to me, and I've seen there's, there's a lot of commentary on Nextdoor and so forth about, about the ticket, about the charges for the parking. So, you know, I, I would prefer, in fact, one of the things that we've even talked about is perhaps in our licensing agreement, limiting how much the team charges, so that we as a city don't get blamed, because we're getting all the negative press. They're not blaming the team, they're blaming the city for the parking problems and the traffic problems and everything else. So, you know, maybe that's something we consider, too, to say, look, if we're going to keep it at $10 a car, then you only charge $20 a car. And we keep it affordable for the people that want to come to the games, but if you're going to charge $50 to $70 a car, then the city ought to share in that revenue stream. So we can go either way. I'm not saying that, that, that the city needs to push for maximum amount of profit here. What I'm saying is that our share should be commensurate with what's being charged. I would rather see the prices kept low, because I think that, you know, that, that benefits the folks that are, are coming to see the games. The ticket prices are fairly high, and so if we could keep the parking more reasonable, and since we control the parking lot, then let's, let's make this more affordable for families that are driving here to see the games. So I would rather even contemplate that, where we say, you can only charge $20 a car under the licensing agreement. I don't want to see you, you know, charge five times as much to the patrons that, that you're, that, that we're charging you. I just don't think that's reasonable. So there's more, more than one way to get to where you're going, Juan.
So tell me, Chris, what, what kind of price range are we looking at for parking?
We're talking $25 a game for one package, $35 for another, and for the top rate, $50, $50 for the top rate. But we keep you in a equitable. When you talk equitable, you're talking $10. When you, when you extrapolate everything out, the city gets $10, and the, the team gets $9.45. That's equitable right there. The city is getting more. And you talk about the eight games that, that's on, that we gave, those are the eight games that Inter Miami is in charge of. The rest were preseason games, which we're not parked, which we do not get revenue from. So we gave you the games that we get revenue from, and those games that we get revenue from, the city gets $10 per car, and we get, after we pay all the expenses, $9.45 per car. I think that is equitable.
Could I get Bennett for that? Because I want to know where in that licensing agreement it makes a distinction between these games? Because I didn't see that in there, so help me understand.
Ben Rogers, City Municipal Office. Commissioner, I would agree with you that there was maybe some confusion from, from, from Inter Miami. We, we have received payments for games that are not Inter Miami soccer games.
I mean, does it, so we have a licensing agreement which allows them to park cars on our land. Does it matter whose games they are, who's not? We're not putting on the soccer games.
Correct.
These are not our events, right? We get four events at the stadium a year. If we put on an event, we own the parking. If they're putting on an event, they own the parking. It, it's indistinguishable whether it's their team playing, or they're hosting a, a scrimmage, or if it's a, whatever it may be.
I think there's, to clarify, for this season, that is correct. So anytime that they use the parking lot, there's a fee per, per car, right? In prior years, the language of the agreement said per paid vehicle. So if Inter Miami did not charge for cars to park in the lot to attend the game, then there was nothing coming back to the city.
So if they park 2,500 cars out there and don't charge, we get nothing?
In, in the previous year, that's correct.
In the previous?
Yes, but this-
But what about the current?
But not currently.
Currently, it's $10 per vehicle parked.
Irrespective of paid or not paid or anything?
Outside of the 100, no charge vehicles.
Okay.
So when you say it's equitably distributed, you know, we're always looking to get more money. So, I mean, is there an opportunity here for the city to get anything more? I mean, Commissioner Sturman, you seem to be on top of this. What are your thoughts?
I mean, I'm, I'm hearing what John's saying, which is interesting. No, we want more money, but John's saying we'll take less money if it's, if we reduce the prices of tickets. No, you heard what we said, or you guys weren't here during our infrastructure thing. We were talking about charging to park at City Hall, and I said this is a barrier to going to City Hall. You know, exorbitant parking's a barrier for your, even your fans to go to the game, and like John says, that looks bad for us. I mean, if we, we go down to the 10, and we just limit what we charge for, for your fans, it's sending a message that we're more welcoming. If there's a way to keep it, the price low for us, and keep the price low to the fans, I, no, we're not in the business of making money. This is, we're not going to balance the budget based upon what we charge.
Commissioner, if you're spending, for a family of four, if you're spending like $500 for a game, you know, $50, $40 is not going to dissuade you or encourage you one way or the other about attending a game, so.
Well, they're not, see, I mean, I have to, they're not complaining to me, so, I mean, I'm not, John might be getting them, the price of the tickets, I'm, I don't want to opine upon that, because that's not something that, that I have any feedback, but the price that the tickets are, nobody's complaining to me one way or the other.
Maybe if we could get the 100, 100 spaces, the price for the 100 spaces, that might be helpful? Yeah, I think so, too.
I want to, I just want to clarify something, that if, if the person, part of the problem is that we've not had the parking to sell. If they, if, if the person that is buying a parking pass buys a season pass, it's $25 a game. We've not been able to do that, because we haven't had the right to use the parking. So the, the parking that's affordable for people, we, we just have not been able to offer that. That's why the, now what's happening is the price has gone up, because the, the cost to run it is so much more difficult when people show up at the last minute and don't have a parking pass, which we've not been able to sell, because we haven't had the right to sell the parking passes. But the regular parking pass, purchase preseason with your package, is only $25 a game. And that's, I, that's a fair price to park, I think, for, for anybody. I want to also clarify emphatically, the issue of parking for Inter Miami has never been about the money. It's not about the money. We've had numerous discussions with the city where we've said, we'll turn it over to you, you run it. It's better for everybody.
No, we don't want to run it, we just want to collect.
But it's always been about the fan experience. It's about giving people a safe place to park that is close to-
Right, we understand.
Right. We understand.
The stadium. It's never been about money. This is not a money-making operation. In fact, it's quite a pain in the neck to run.
All right. So can we, can we just, let's just conclude. Is it possible for the 100 spaces that you give for free, if those free spaces could, could be offered off-site to your own space, your own parking lot, allowing us to get another $10 a car for the 100 spaces? And we'll call this, we'll, we'll end this conversation.
So we're, we're talking about $1,000?
Yeah.
Is that what we're talking about? Seriously?
Yes.
$1,000, okay. Are we good with that?
Well, why don't we just split it, maybe we can go 50? Break it down to 50. Oh, come on, come on.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Sure, and, and $20 a car.
I just can't even believe we're talking.
So we bump it up to $20 a car, we double the price per car, and then I'll give you 50 spaces. Split the baby on both sides. I'm all about that. I'm all about solace. Double the price and we'll give you 50 spaces.
Senator and Stephanie, I want to hear just one thing because I did hear an allegation that there were going to be increases to parking prices. Is that true?
No, it's, the way it works, it's, it's $25 if you buy preseason, sorry, let me read it, I want to be exactly correct. If you were able to buy it preseason, which we've not been able to offer, it was $25 a car. If you buy online pre-purchase, like you're not showing up at the last second, it's $35 a car. And if you showed up last second, which creates a headache for everybody, most of all the police, it's $50 a car. That's a very rare instance, that $50 a car. It's mostly 25 and 35.
And that's the rate that it has been and will be?
That's, that's the established rate.
So it will not be going to 70 as I'd been told?
I, I have not heard that, except for in this meeting. I've never heard that.
Do you have higher prices for premium parking closer?
Of course. Yes, of course. If you're parking right next to the stadium, you're, you know, in a VIP, in a VIP pass, yeah, then.
Oh, but that's on your property, not on ours.
That's on the, that's on the Inter Miami.
Okay, so, all right, okay, so that doesn't affect us.
I think we'd be happy to give the 100, the 100 cars. We'll take them, we'll take the 100 cars.
So nothing's changed. And we've heard, we've heard also now several times about price gouging. Are you aware of price gouging or who might be doing that?
I'm not, but I, I'm not out there on, on the ground.
Not that I would ever, ever question the veracity of everything I read on Nextdoor, but I just wanted to make sure that that's like true, you know, is that true?
Okay.
I have a question.
Okay.
What happened in the scenario where all the, I guess the lower grade parking, you, you sell out and it's only the VIP that's available? Do, are they coming in to pay at that amount now that there's no other space?
That's a, that's a really good question. So the, the paved lot that's owned by, by, not owned, it's city property, but, but is controlled by Inter Miami, that's VIP parking. I, I think that's even, that's very rarely even available to purchase. That's for your season ticket holders that are in certain areas, owner, owners' boxes, things like that. I think your, your question is, is there, is there an opportunity last minute to buy like a better site? I don't believe so. I've been to games where I've had trouble getting through the crowds, you know, it's, you know, it's a game, right? So there's lots of people coming, it's sold out. I think when you are able to go in and buy a last minute place to park, you're kind of parking either like on, on the edge of the yellow lot out by Commercial or maybe even what we call the FAU, which is I think the orange lot. I don't believe you're able to get up to the front to park. Those are gone long before the game has been, the tickets have been issued.
So Mayor, where are we on this?
We're, we've concluded. They're going to give us, they're going to give us the 100 spaces back and, and at $10 a space.
So that's what's happening?
And that's it.
And then, and then parking's extended through December?
Right.
Okay. I'd still rather go for 20 a space. I, I think, I think there's enough fat on the bone for, for us to get a better share.
We have next year to figure that out.
So wait, well, wait, let's see. So we haven't all spoken. I'd like to know where my comments are. So please don't decide on their behalf, Mayor.
Okay.
And Susan?
Mayor, if I may, I just want to make sure I have some clarification. So where we landed was $10 a car, eliminating the first 100 free spaces and adding a right to audit into the extension that we're going to provide?
I think that's correct, right?
Yeah.
Yes, that is correct. That is correct. What, when was the right to audit not entered? When was that agreement published? What year?
When did we, Ben, do you happen to know when we entered into the initial parking agreement that we've extended a couple of times or modified?
Oh, yeah, we've had it for a couple of years, so.
How many?
I, I need to check, but I think this is our third year.
So for three years, that agreement goes back three years?
This current agreement only goes back to January of this year.
Right, but was that policy of not being able to audit from the beginning?
That's my understanding.
Okay, from the beginning, three years ago?
That's correct. Both, both the contracts, the 24, one and the, and the one prior to that, that had four amendments, didn't have an audit clause in it.
It did not?
Did not.
What was the first year?
The first year was, that I have is, it was, it was dated March 20th, '23. So there probably was one before that too, because it started in 2022, the, the soccer games.
Okay. Thank you. All right, thank you. Thank you, folks. So I guess, so I guess the thought is $10 a car, you eliminate the 100, and you could charge whatever you want as you get closer, but on our property, I guess the max would be $50 a car?
Wait.
So, so, yeah, so we were just provided this from, and it was at 70. I don't know if you could take a look at that. This is for the St. Louis SC parking, and it looks like from the official website. Sorry. Thank you.
That, that's why I said when it's $70, I'm not making numbers up, folks.
Well, if the, if we're, that is about those 100 spaces as well?
Right.
Okay, so if, if, what John is saying about the $20 versus the $10, if it's going for 70.
Well, we don't know it's going for 70. Is it going for?
That's off the website.
Let's, let's wait and see what this is.
I think these are.
Well, I, I think.
It's hard to say. I think these might be the VIP, I mean, I know it says general lot, but I think these are, because it, it lists out yellow, orange, brown, and purple, and I'm not sure what all those color designations are. I just don't, I don't know. I don't know enough about this to be able to.
Well, why don't we say this? To the extent that you charge up to $50, then the, the share, the profit sharing arrangement is as Susan described, which was the $10, eliminating the 100 and the right to audit. If we discover that you're charging more than $50, then the city's share will go up as well. And in fact, we should probably get half of everything that's over $50.
That seems very fair.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Very good. Let us move on. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
On the last issue that you had on behalf of my profession, I can tell you in Tallahassee, there's no lobbyists lobbying against citizens review boards. That's a legislative directive, that's a legislator from a conservative district that came up with that House bill and passed it through, but when it comes to.
For what reason? Did you know, do you know the? Let's just say one thing. We've stopped the issue on Business Board. Now, this is just regarding Business Street. Okay. You can go. What, so how did that happen?
The easiest bill to pass in Tallahassee is something, you know, against crime, anti-crime bill.
Right, right, right.
I mean, we did an anti-murder bill when I was in the Senate, like who's, who's for murder?
Okay.
So what that is, is a House member filing a bill that eliminates something in their community and they made it statewide. And that's the easiest bill to pass in Tallahassee now. Any bill that's pro-police and pro-law enforcement and anti-citizens, it'd fly through legislature right now. And that's what happened.
But doesn't it go through several committees? Doesn't it have to be vetted?
Yes. It goes through four committees. That bill went through four committees, went through four friendly committees, and it got a handful of no votes. But, I mean, that's the makeup of the legislature right now. Your, your staff does a great job in lobbying in Tallahassee, but they're lobbying against the tidal wave. I mean, you're, you're in the minority when it comes to South Florida and especially Broward County, and they're lobbying against that tidal wave. They're lobbying other members, not other lobbyists, because no one lobbies these issues in Tallahassee. But those are member-driven issues so they can do something politically.
Was there an incident that happened in the county that you know of or not?
No, there, there was no incident that happened. I checked on this. There's no incident that happened, but it's a bill that you can pass. And the name of the game is passing a bill and saying, I'm tough on crime, I did this, you know, back to blue, vote for me.
We're here to support police.
Yes. And the issue before that, Commissioner Glassman, that's where he said, give her a call regarding the healthcare. She'll gladly talk to you on behalf of Lauderdale.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Senator. I appreciate that.
Mayor, one more clarification, just so I made sure I heard you right. So it, to the extent anything is over 50, we would split that difference. So in that example, if it was $60, it would be 15 versus 10? And if it was 70, it would be 20 versus?
Yes.
The 10? Thank you. Okay. I'll say.
Okay, moving on to CF1, overview of city's effort to remove trash from the waterways. Who will be speaking to that? Hi, Dr. Gasman?
Dr. Nancy Gasman, Assistant Director of Public Works. And I'm assuming you guys have the presentation available to you.
There's a presentation, right?
There it is.
And there it is.
So at the April 2nd Commission meeting, Commissioner Herbst requested that there be a presentation to help the commission understand how we are removing trash from our waterways. And this presentation includes a number of the items that were brought up at that time. There's a delay, so I apologize.
Very fancy PowerPoint.
Yes. City jurisdictional waterways was one of the questions. Which waterways do we actually own? What are other municipalities doing to clean their waterways? What are we doing currently to clean our waterways and prevent trash from getting in our waterways? Also, an overview of the new contract that'll be coming before you on June 18th, and then other trash removal activities throughout the city. So this is an older graphic, but what I want to bring your attention to is generally speaking, the areas in red are city jurisdictional waterways, and the areas in blue are waterways generally of the state. And I've broken those down into the general areas, north and south. So this is the area north of Commercial Boulevard. As you can see, the C-14 canal, for example, is a state waterway. The intercoastal waterway is considered a state waterway as well.
It seems that all the artificially dugout canals are the city stuff, and the natural waterway seem to be the state. Is that, am I?
I, I think that's a fair overview.
Yeah. This, this, the dugout canals, the artificially dugout canals seem to be the city's responsibility, and the natural waterways seem to be the state's.
So if we look south of Sunrise Boulevard, what we see is that there are areas that, again, are both state, but you also can see that there are private waterways in the River Isles area. So there are some of the waterways that are considered privately owned.
Rivier Isle? Go, go back, go back, go back, go back one second. Rivier Isle, they have, they own their own waterways?
Gentlemen in the back, you've brought up the wrong presentation. If you can please switch the presentation to the one we loaded up earlier.
But this, there was a, Dr. Gasman? Wait, hold on a second, there, got technical difficulties here. You want to take a break to figure this out?
Um, I.
I got a thumbs up, it's coming up now. Coming up.
While we're waiting for it to come up, there's a piece of the South Fork that's, that's city. It looks like most of the New River is not city.
So the area, the area you're looking at is the Tarpon River?
Oh, oh, okay, there, I see.
And there, there is some confusion about a portion of the river. It's only listed as right-of-way. It does not have a designation as to whether it's city or whether it's state. And that's the area east of, I believe, Andrews Avenue on the south portion of the Tarpon as it comes to the west, back up to the New River. So as I mentioned, this is a relatively older, older graphic. That, that is, that is under city jurisdiction. It's the area to the west, Mayor, that I have less certainty of. And that would require a little bit more research, but the point here is just to note that the majority of the canals, as you pointed out, are the artificially created canals that are under city's jurisdiction. And then there are private waterways throughout the city, and an example here is the private waterways in the Rivier Isles area. And then if we look south of 17.
Who owns those waterways?
What if that means?
In Rivier Isles, the upland property owners are equal share in owning those waterways.
So is it an undivided one half? Do they own to the center of the, of the canal?
My understanding of the way that their covenants is written is that it's joint ownership. The parcels don't extend beyond the edge of the normal earthen property, but that there is a covenants that allows them to have joint ownership of those waterways.
Okay.
And if you want to know more information, you'll really have to look to the city attorney's office to answer that question.
This isn't, this isn't, and we're not testing you, but stump the doctor.
Wouldn't be the first time. And then the area south of 17th Street Causeway, again, you see that in the area of Riverland, there's also a series of privately owned waterways. And there's also an area more to the west, which the city has a dependent drainage district or a dependent district called the Lauderdale Isles Water Management District. And their primary function in those waterways is to provide aquatic weed control.
Is to apply what?
Is to address aquatic weed control. So they are an independent taxing district, and those dollars go to addressing aquatic weeds within those waterways.
A weed, a weed, oh, I do.
So when you talk about the issue of water quality, there are many different components that one needs to consider, whether that's the physical components like color or temperature, the biological component related to bacteria and algae, chemical components such as oxygen or nutrients. But this specific conversation is really about trash and debris floating within the waterway. So one of the questions that was asked at the April 2nd meeting was, what are other cities do to perform this work? And so I've got a number of slides to show you what some of our surrounding neighborhood municipalities, neighboring municipalities are doing. In Wilton Manners, it's provided as an internal service. They have thirteen miles of waterway. They have two boats. They generally use those two boats to focus on trash and floating debris removal. These activities are done, scheduled quarterly, and they take as long as they take for each of those quarterly reviews to cover the entirety of the waterway. They say it's usually several days to cover the entire river. And then the program costs are listed there as well. Pompano Beach also provided as an internal service, twenty-seven miles of waterway. Again, they're looking at both trash and other floating debris. They're running a single-service boat four days a week, and again, the costs are listed. Hollywood does not provide any waterway cleaning services for their internal canal network or along the intercoastal waterway. When asked why, they said that the cities are not under the city's jurisdiction. These waterways are not under the city's jurisdiction, and so they do not take responsibility for the effort to maintain them. Margate, which is to our west, has a fifty-five mile network of internal canals, and they're running two harvesters, but their, their primary focus is aquatic weed control and not trash. And then finally, Boca Raton, probably the closest city to our type of coastal environment. They have four boats, but they only run one at a time. They're operating three days a week. Their focus is non-organic trash, meaning they don't pick up palm fronds, coconuts, et cetera. They have about a seventy-seven mile network, and their costs are about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. Which leads us to, how do we perform this work? The city has a contract service. We're running one service boat five days a week throughout our hundred and sixty-five miles of waterway, plus there are certain inland lakes that we also provide this service for. We're collecting about a hundred tons of debris annually at a cost of about three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year.
Wow.
And as you can see in the lower left-hand, I'm sorry, the lower right-hand corner, the vehicle is provided with a GPS unit, and so we have daily tracking of where they are providing this service and are able to confirm that every month they are going to every one of the city's waterways.
That's trash and organic material.
We collect, we collect anything, anything floating, yeah. Our current contractor is Aquatics Control. So when you look over time, since fiscal sixteen, what you see is that when this was provided as an internal service, we were collecting less than thirty tons of debris annually. Once we switched over to a full-time, committed contract service, we have collected as much as a hundred and sixty tons of debris in a, in a single year. And the majority of that material is, is landscape materials and coconuts. And the top graphic is, the top photo is, is a representative photo of, of what they are collecting on a regular basis. So to switch gears a little bit and talk about how we are trying to prevent pollution from getting in our waterways, the city has a proactive maintenance of our storm drain system, and we run several street sweepers on a daily basis. And over the course of a year, we pick up about fifteen hundred tons of debris and silt that gets into our systems that never end up getting to the waterway. And this is an important thing to consider because this is, this is pollution prevention. This is debris that never, never ends up getting into our waterway, so we don't have to pick it out of our waterway. In addition, the city has some very large pollution control devices that we clean on a quarterly basis. And we've also added baffles into the storm drain system where possible, which also helps keep debris from getting into the outfalls and is maintained in the catch basins for our collection. To help you understand what one of these waterway quality structures look like, this is one that we have recently installed in the River Oaks area in advance of the new pump station that is located near the River Oaks Stormwater Preserve. And those are real people to provide you a sense of scale of how large these units are. Anything that's in the system that is headed toward the pump station to get discharged gets trapped inside these large structures. And so we're able to prevent, once again, bottles and silt from ever getting to the pump station, so they never get discharged.
Where is this now?
River Oaks.
No, where, River Oaks?
This is, this is near the River Oaks pump station on the north side of the preserve.
So all the, so all the stormwater drains go, this is like a, like a, like a strainer? It kind of just captures it?
It's a good way to think about it. Yeah. It's a, it's a, it's a device that, that is able to grab onto the debris and prevent it from moving forward into the system. And then we're able to clean out that debris and dispose of it appropriately.
And this is what several, several conduits drain into a central area here, each?
Yeah, a boat, a substantial portion of the Edgewood neighborhood and a substantial portion of the River Oaks neighborhood drain to this location. And so anything that we don't capture inside the catch basins, this is, this is the last opportunity to grab it before it gets to the pump station. And the pump station also has grates inside of it that can grab additional debris and prevent that from getting into the pumps. So for every, every pump station that we will be installing in the future, there's at least one, if not two, of these structures that are being installed as well. So trying to take on both of those purposes and missions of the stormwater team to improve water quality in our waterways, but also capture this debris upland.
Cool.
So at our, your next commission meeting, during your regular commission meeting, you'll have an item that is a new contract for this waterway cleaning services that provides some additional enhancements. We will be running two service boats daily, five days a week. All of the waterways will be touched once a month, consistent with the current, but we'll be running two boats, so we'll be able to pick up more debris as we go. In addition to that, there are hotspots in-
Before you do that, so what is, what is the, what is the technology that's going to be used? Is it going to be the same technology of just, you know, raking the, the surface? Or is there a new technology that is now available that helps attract the debris even from the bottom of the waterway? You know what I'm talking about?
Not completely.
Okay.
But there are, there are a number of different types of boats that are specifically designed for this purpose. But our waterways are somewhat unique. A lot of this trap, trash is trapped under docks and along the edges. A lot of the technology that's available for boats that are specifically designed to collect trash require the trash to be in the open waters. So this is a very manual activity to ensure that we're able to grab the trash wherever we see it and, and pull it toward a boat. It's, it's mostly a manual process. In addition to doing the once, one touch of every waterway per month, the city, working both with the previous vendor and using our complaint system, have identified additional hotspots. And those hotspots, we will be servicing at a higher level moving forward to ensure that that trash gets removed at least every other week. We expect that this is going to increase the amount of trash that we are moving by about fifty percent. And the contract also includes other services that support waterway maintenance. One of the other things that came up in the April meeting was the use of sea bins. These are trash skimmers. They're primarily designed for marinas and other water bodies. As you look through those required site conditions, they have to be maintained on a daily basis. They have to have access to power, and they have very specific requirements about how high waves can be and the water levels. These do not work in most of our waterways, and we certainly don't have the staffing to be able to maintain these on a daily basis. I think the other thing that's important to understand about sea bins is that they've substantially changed their business model. They no longer sell the technology. What they sell are the environmental benefits, using something called nature certificates. And so we couldn't buy a sea bin if we wanted to. But there are other technologies that are similar, but I think the critical piece here is that they are primarily designed for quiet or protected water bodies like marinas. The city is not only using the contractor activities to identify concerns. The Code Compliance Group recently obtained a boat, and they are going out on the waterways several times a week. And if they see unusual collections of trash, they call that in, and we send out the vendor to collect that, that debris. In addition, the Marine Advisory Board has started an initiative on cleaner waterways, and they are exploring a number of different things that they think may be important to improve the aesthetics of the waterway as well as waterway quality. And there's also volunteer events that pick up debris. There's a monthly activity at Bill Keith Preserve to try to remove trash and debris that gets caught up in the mangroves, that natural shoreline at Bill Keith. And I'm sure many of you are aware of the various beach cleanups to try to remove trash from our beaches. With that, I'll conclude, just noting that on the right side, you see photographs of the variety of things that our vendor is picking up. Sinage, vegetation, regularly picking up pilings. They often remove portions of docks and dock debris, as well as basic trash. Thank you for your time.
All right, great, thank you so much. Does anyone have any questions of Dr. Gassman?
Just one. First of all, thank you very much. This is very helpful, very educational. Have we noticed any kind of significant numbers calling Fix-It or reporting these kinds of issues? Has Fix-It been getting?
Has Fix-It been fixing it?
Well, not are they fixing it, but are people using Fix-It?
I don't know the answer to the question.
Okay.
Okay.
It works.
There you go.
A shout-out from the audience.
Excellent. Thank you. Always good to know. Thank you very much.
So I'll, I'll go ahead and also say thank you very much, Dr. Gassman. The report was really good, it was very comprehensive. I've gotten a lot of comments from neighborhoods in my district that are experiencing a lot of debris in the water, and having this benchmarking information, I think, was very helpful. I know you participated in my agenda review with the district last night and were able to answer some of those questions specifically. One of the things that we did talk about was the number of street cleaning vehicles that we have out there. These are expensive, but they've done an amazing job of keeping debris out of the stormwater system so that it doesn't wind up in our canals. And one of the things I'd like us to think about, and part of our capital improvement program and budgeting, is adding another one. So I believe we have three, and at any given point, one may be, you know, in, in maintenance mode. So we've got two that are out there, but I forget the number from your presentation, but there's, there's quite a few tons of debris and material that are being captured at the street level before it winds up into our stormwater system. So the less that gets into our catch basins, the less we've got to go and clean out, the less it eventually winds up into our waterways, the better off we all are. So I'd like us to really think, as we go through the budgeting process, about increasing the number of vehicles that we put out there, because I think it makes a huge difference. You know, our waterways are integral to the image of the city of Fort Lauderdale, and keeping them clean, keeping them pristine, is an obligation that we have to focus on. And it's, and this is not a district thing. I mean, every, every part of the city experiences, you know, the, the debris winding up in our waterways. So I think this is good for everybody. You know, some neighborhoods have more of it than others, but we all have waterways through our communities. And I think it's, it's, it's important that we keep them as clean as possible from a sustainability perspective, but also just from a visual and tourist perspective. When you're on one of the boats going up and down the canals and you see debris floating in the water, it just says, we don't care. It's that broken window theory. So, anything we can do, Susan, to, to look at adding additional vehicles to our fleet, I think is something long-term that we need to invest in. Thank you. And thank you again to you and your staff.
Yeah, so the fifteen hundred tons that we're collecting is from both street sweeping and from our catch basin cleaning. The street sweepers mainly operate on streets that have curbs. So it, it limits where we can actually take the street sweepers. We are, we have requested in, in this year's budget as a decision package to add additional jet vectors, which are important for the catch basin cleaning. And so we are certainly pursuing that, and I believe that we have either in this year or next year, the intent to replace one of our existing street sweepers with a new street sweeper, which should help with downtime related to maintenance.
Thank you. Any other questions? There being none, thank you. We have a couple people who signed up to speak. Ted and Sarah and Kevin O'Neil. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Ted and Sarah, the president of the River Oaks Civic Association. And golly, what, what you said, we got to have more trucks in that, it's amazing that we only have two and sometimes three. And I think even doubling the boats to two is way below what we need. We have the same number of boats right now as Hollywood, and almost three times the, the waterway limits or lengths. So, so that has to be done. We're the Venice of America. This is, this is very important. And Mr. Mayor, like we talked at length at our civic association meeting, the pumps, that was a great presentation. The pumps she was showing in River Oaks is that Osceola Creek coming from Edgewood, under eighty-four, into River Oaks, into this preserve. That, that was the plan. And how we only cleared one part of the creek. We need to figure out a way, it's on private property, but see, we, we're starting, but we're going to come to River Oaks and it hits, you know, a stoppage. So that's, that's going to be the problem, because that's how it gets into these pumps. So, you know what, I just thought-
But you know, can I just say something?
Yes, sir.
What's not being said here, the elephant in the room, is that people need to be more careful what they dump into our waterways, okay?
My goodness, yes.
It's not just the palm fronds. I see people carelessly dropping things. I, I mean, I live on a lake where there's very, very little, you know, traffic. There's no motorized traffic or whatever. I have all kinds of plastic bottles and all kinds of, in fact, a kayak washed up on my, 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 yeah, my seawall a couple weeks ago. Yeah, exactly. I mean, you would think someone would be looking for it, but I mean, it's just, people just are very careless, and I say this to the community, please be more careful. Stop dumping in and, and pumping your bilge pump into the water. I mean, it's just, just absolutely inexcusable the way we don't respect our waterways.
Now, in River Oaks, we do-
Time's up. No, just kidding.
In, in River Oaks, we do a lot on our own. We have, you know, a fun event planned where we get out there with our pool skimmers and reach down into the water and picking up trash. And it just occurred to me, you know, we have this Python roundup with everybody out here? Why don't we get the boating community, because I know they'd be behind this, and do a roundup, a trash roundup? Have them come to Esplanade Park. They weigh it in. Each boat gets a weigh amount, how much trash and debris they got. Have live music there, and then make it a citywide event. Yeah, we have the beach cleanup, and I know Lauderdale Isles does a great job there, but boy, if we made this citywide and made it, promote the heck out of it, and made it a real event, you know, debris roundup, you know? It works well with the Pythons.
We do it on the beach, we do it on the beach.
Yeah, that, but we need the waterways.
Right.
I mean, the actual waterways.
I agree.
And so I think that would, that would work. I think it would be, people would get behind it. And if we made it, like you said, like the, the smoke-on-the-water thing and the, and all of that that they do at Esplanade Park, have that as the finish line, I, I think the boating community, I almost guarantee the boating community, because I would help, would rally around and, and make it a great event. And it could be an annual, two, three times a year event, and, because this is just so important to our, to our city.
I agree. All right, thank you. Kevin O'Neil?
Thank you, Dr. Gassman, for your presentation. And as I noted in the middle of the presentation, I have taken a veil of using the garbage barge. My name is Kevin O'Neil. I'm a Landings resident, and I'm also a graduate of the Neighborhood Leadership Academy, Class Twelve. I'm trying to set up a coalition in Fort Lauderdale to become more systematic in keeping trash out of our canals. My efforts were covered in a WSVN Channel Seven News Spotlight a couple of weeks ago, and other residents have actually sort of seen that, have reached out. I have three sea bins that have been lent to us by the University of Florida, Florida Sea Grant Program, and I've identified at least three more that can be donated to the city. You know, many marinas have actually stopped using sea bins because they've moved on to bigger and better products, but there's a really large amount of unused sea bins out there. I personally have got one in the back of my canal. It cost me about five thousand dollars to get it in the water, but I think one of the things that I find it's very worthwhile, because I can demonstrate viability, that we can actually kind of make a change and we can do something to clean up. Since November, I've had it in the water for about five months, and I've already picked up about four hundred and fifty pounds of trash from-
Of what? Organic or inorganic?
Yeah, it's largely plastic, lots of styrofoam, tips of cigar tips, amazing how many you get of those, bottles, food wrappers, et cetera, et cetera. I also get a lot of both garden and construction debris. I've made enemies of a number of my neighbors because I've seen their gardeners shooting the trash into the canal, but every time I hear a blower, I'm running out in my backyard to scream at somebody, so.
Ban the blowers, no.
Yeah. No, but it's, I mean, they just blow it all in the canal, and of course, I have to dig it out of my sea bin, which is annoying. So I actually lent my sea bin to Admiral Concierge Services at F-3 Marina, and they used it for about a couple of weeks. And they're actually now going to put a second sea bin into the Seminole Canal to start getting that through. So again, I'm really just trying to put together a coalition. Some of the initial challenges we faced, of course, one is funding, and the other is nobody wants to take out the trash. So I, I think one of the things-
Go ahead, go ahead.
So, and then plus there's maintenance costs that's associated. Because our waters are so warm, the organic growth on the sea bin is pretty fast, so we have to sort of power wash them once and once. But I've started talking with International Trash Trap Network, who actually runs sort of the University of Toronto, has a coalition going on on Lake Ontario, and I've reached out to International Sea Keepers, which has like a group of citizen scientists, just to see if we can sort of get some people that would be interested in actually taking out the trash. When I go on vacation, I have to turn my sea bin off because no one does it. And we're also looking to reach out to other funding sources, but until I actually get some stronger nonprofits working with me, I can't really ask for money. And the commission is invited to come see the sea bin in operation. Any involvement of the Fort, City of Fort Lauderdale in this initiative would be much appreciated, and I think really what we could look forward to is hopefully a citizens and city coalition to get this done.
Okay, great, thank you so much, we appreciate it. By the way, just a quick question. Did you just paint your room blue, or is that the style of your shirt?
Excuse me? Oh, no, this is the style of the shirt. No, I didn't, I wasn't saying it.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this item? Okay, there being none. Moving on to CF2. This is a discussion of requested cost of living adjustment for the general employee's retirement system.
And Finance Director Linda Short is going to lead off, followed by members of GERS.
Yes. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. I'm here to present a discussion on the GERS cost of living. Every few years or so, the retirees make a petition to the commission to ask for a COLA. There are provisions in the ordinance, as well as provisions in the bondholders documents that require certain criteria to be met. Two of the three criterias have been met. The third criteria has to do with the addition of additional, the availability- The third criteria has to do with the addition of additional, the availability of additional benefits based upon the pension obligation bonds. At this point in time, the pension obligation bonds require that if we are gonna give an additional benefit to any member of either GERS or police and fire, it has to be fully funded with a majority plus one vote. Or if we're gonna amortize it over a period of time, it requires a unanimous vote from the commission. The cost for such improvements is $12.8 million to fully fund it. Or if it's amortized over the life, it could be a five-year amortization of $2.2 million or a seven-year, I'm sorry, a five-year amortization of $2.8 million or a seven-year amortization of $2.2 million. But those will require a unanimous vote of the commission in order to put that into place. So I have the executive director for the plan here to provide some further information about the request. Nick?
Thank you, Linda. Commissioners, how are you? My name's Nick Sheas. I'm the pension administrator for the general employees' retirement system.
What was your retirement?
Is that better? So I'm the pension administrator for the City of Fort Lauderdale General Employees Retirement System. Unlike many other systems that have an automatic built-in cost of living adjustment to three, you know, two and a half percent per year, here it's an ad hoc COLA. There's a number of requirements that have to be met. This is one of the years that we've met all the criteria, financial criteria for the commission to grant a COLA. So we are appearing here for consideration of a 2.75% COLA for our retirees. I'd like to note, and it was all in your material, that the last cost of living adjustment was back in 2001. And in the 11 years prior to that, it was granted eight out of 11 times. So recently since 2001, and I think the cumulative CPI is nearly 75% since 2001.
I guess the mayor's not here. So commission, did you want to ask any questions right now or should we open it up? We have some folks that have signed up. Anyone want to ask any questions right now?
I'd actually like to hear from-
Commissioner Hertz, go right ahead.
I'd like to hear from the folks that are here, because I know I've gotten an inordinate amount of emails. I'm sure we all have. I've been inundated for the last week or so. So I appreciate the passion and turnout from our retiree group. So I'd like to hear from them, and then, you know, maybe we could open it up for discussion amongst the commission.
Okay, anyone else on the commission or should we just open it up to the speakers? Okay, thank you. So I just have three here. I have Eve Baser, I have Hattie Williams-Brinton, and I have Mark Dickerson. So in that order, if we could hear from the public. Eve?
Hi, good afternoon, Vice Mayor. Wait for the mayor to come in, Commissioners. Most of you know me. I've been here before. I also worked for the city for 21 years. It was interesting earlier when you were talking about incentives for current employees, and I was thinking, well-
Could you stay closer to the microphone? Thank you.
And I was thinking, those of us who are retired, we feel like, you know, we've been put out to pasture and forgotten. And I would think that the current employees would also benefit from knowing that the commission is concerned about us after we retire. It's been an interesting journey that I've taken on this because Patty and I have taken the lead on trying to make this happen for the past few years. And because of that, I've been in touch with many, many retired people, and I've heard some very sad stories. Those who have been retired the longest, their pensions are very, very small. And quite frankly, the 2.75 isn't gonna make a major difference or any difference in their life, except they may be able to get a prescription that they couldn't have filled before. There are some people getting pensions that are quite lucrative and they earned it, but the majority of us are not earning pensions like that. And as Nick said, we haven't had a COLA in 23 years or so. And it's not that it wasn't happening before, but it just ceased happening. So most of us who are getting our pensions never saw a COLA. And we think that now with inflation and everything, perhaps you would be more considerate and think about the people who used to work here. Thank you.
How long have you been retired?
I've been retired for about 13 years, I think.
Thirteen?
Yeah.
Thank you, Eve. Do you have any questions?
You were with Christine Teal, weren't you?
Yes, I was.
District One-
Well, I was retired at the time, but I was called back and asked to work for Christine, and I, yes, I was-
So on behalf of District One, thank you for all the work you did for us back when Christine Teal was here.
I'm available again. Especially if you're giving a $17,000 incentive.
I think we call these boomerang employees. They leave, they come back, they leave, they come back.
So you've been retired for 13 years?
Actually, you could run for office.
You were like 12 years old when you retired or you're so young?
Thank you. I'm glad I came up here to hear that. Thank you very much.
You can tell he's not an ophthalmologist. Okay, so thank you very much.
My friend Steve.
So let's go to Hattie. Thank you very much. Hattie, take it away.
Good afternoon. Hi. To the Vice Mayor and everyone, Commissioners, and everyone in their respective places. I also worked for the City of Fort Lauderdale for 24 years. I was the executive assistant to the fire chief for the City of Fort Lauderdale. I trained five fire chiefs. I think they turned out pretty well. I'm here not only behalf of myself, but for the retirees, again, who are receiving very minimal amounts of money to live on every month. And it's a struggle. Everyone knows. It's a struggle for everyone. Everyone does not have a six-figure. They didn't get the 7% multiplier when they retired. And they're struggling financially to make ends meet. And the cost of living, the cost of gas, the cost of mortgages, the interest, the cost of living in Florida itself has gone up significantly since COVID-19. And every excuse that we get is COVID-19. The problem is COVID. Well, we've met the criteria several times. We've been before this board, different Commissioners on several occasions, asking you to consider even the minutest, the smallest amount of COLAs. And it's been a challenge for us as well because these people that we talk to and that we converse with who are struggling, a lot of them have health issues. And like Eve said, they can't even afford their medication. And when you have to make a decision between a meal, your mortgage, your insurance, or your medication, it becomes a struggle. And I know that what we're asking is not gonna make the greatest difference, but every little bit helps when we're dealing with inflation. And from what I hear, the reports, it's not going to get any better. Inflation is constantly on the rise. And so as former employees who served the city, we served the city for many, many years. When we were in our youth, we were strong. We were strong.
You're still young.
And we were willing to do it, willing and happy to do it, to make the city look good, to make it look like the city of Fort Lauderdale. And we did it, working many long hours without pay, without pay, many long hours to get commission agenda items to you all, to make sure they were approved, to do our job and to do it exceptionally well. And now what we're asking is that you would consider us now, even though we're retired. We gave our youth, we gave our time, we gave our service, and we did a phenomenal job, I believe so. The city is in the position it is today because of the retirees. We did a good job. And so we're asking you, consider these people with your conscience. I'm speaking to your conscience today. Consider people who are getting $250 a month a pension, who have not gotten a raise since 2001. And they cannot make ends meet, and so they're forced to live with family members. Even if they're physically, they don't have to, they have to because they can't pay their rent. They can't pay the cost of living. So I'm, again, I'm coming to you for your conscience today. Consider that because we've met the criteria that the city put in place. This is criteria that was put in place. We've met it several times, and we've always met it or we wouldn't even come here for this. But yet we've not been awarded that because it wasn't voted on by everyone.
Okay.
That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Eve Baser? Oh, Eve, she spoke?
Okay. So everyone's spoken now?
Okay. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this item? Okay, there being none. Any member of the commission who wishes to talk?
So, Mayor?
Yeah, Commissioner Hertz.
Thank you. So number of points I want to make here. So first of all, just in the interest of full disclosure, I am a participant, having been an employee of the city for 16 years until my separation. I am a member of GERS and currently receiving a pension. I have checked with the city's attorney's office to see if I need to recuse myself from the vote. I do not because it does not inure to my special benefit. Anything that I vote on will be related to an entire class of retirees. So just want to get that out there on the table. Second part. The pension obligation bond, which Linda referred to, and the provisions within the POB were things that I put in place, as a matter of fact, so the retirees can blame me for that. And that was when Lee Feldman and I crafted the pension obligation bond, because at that point in time, the pensions were very, very underfunded. I mean, we were pushing, I think, the 70% funding ratio on GERS, and I think we were closer to the 50% funding level at one point on police and fire pension. And so in order to shore up the plans, we issued what I think back then was, and Linda will remember, about $350 million of pension obligation bonds, and we turned that money over to the pension plans to manage. And to their credit, both pension plans have done a phenomenal job with the money that we gave them. The assumed rate of return years ago was 8%, and we dropped that down to seven. I think we're down around 6.5%?
6.75.
6.75, thank you. And they have consistently outperformed that. They have saved the city probably hundreds of millions of dollars at this point. I know at one point, Linda, your office was doing an analysis just to show how much the total savings as a result of the POB was. I haven't, I don't remember the last time I saw that, but I know the money was substantial.
It was hundreds of millions of dollars, correct?
Hundreds of millions of dollars. So that, you know, in my entire career with the City of Fort Lauderdale, I think that was probably one of the most productive things I've ever been involved with. It literally, it literally saved the city hundreds of millions of dollars. But the thing we were concerned about at the time was handing all that money over to the pension and then having a commission come along and enhance benefits the next year. You know, so they call that moral hazard. And so we tried to build in some provisions around that to make sure that we didn't find ourselves in an underfunded situation again. So I believe, Nick, right now, we're in the 96, 97% funded ratio, and that was as of last year, which was a bad year for the market.
95.3.
95, right. For any of you that follow the financial press like I do, you know that the NASDAQ, the S&amp;P, and the Dow are hitting new highs on an almost daily basis. So whatever losses the plan sustained in its prior year's actuarial report will not only be erased, but will be substantially surpassed in the upcoming year. I wouldn't be surprised if we're close to 98, perhaps 100% funded when we do our studies at the end of this year, assuming that the market stays kind of roughly where it is. So I want to thank, I want to thank the trustees and Nick as the administrator for managing the money that we turned over to you very well. You've been great stewards of the funds that we've entrusted you with, and I appreciate that. Because in so doing, for those of you who are not pension geeks like myself, that's called an excess experience rating. So all the additional returns that they generate reduce what the city has to contribute. As a matter of fact, it's generally understood within the pension universe that 85% of the total value of the portfolio is generated through investment returns. It's not the money that the employees contribute, it's not the money that the city contributes, it's the investment return that the trustees are able to generate by prudently managing those investments. Again, 85% on average for pension funds is management alone. So again, you guys have done a great job. I fully support this.
Okay. Making all those statements, I want to bring it down to reality, though. So tell us a little bit about the rate of return. I know there have been highs, there have been lows, and then there are blended returns. Like, where do we stand? In other words, is there money in that account to pay for the kind of demand that's being made of the commission now to the tune of $2 to $3 million per year? Okay? I mean, this is what it comes down to. It's not about morality or humanity or equality or whatever. It's about being able to afford it. So yes, there have been good returns, good years of return, and then there have been bad. Where do we stand overall? What's the blended rate? And is there extra money sitting around waiting to be spent?
That's a great question. So the plan is in excellent financial condition. Unfortunately, we cannot use any of the money from the plan to pay for, this is technically called by the state, a benefit enhancement. So you cannot use existing funds to, within the pension plan, to fund a benefit enhancement. So any of the different alternatives, the five-year amortization, the seven-year amortization, or the lump sum must come from, would have to come from the city.
So it has to come out of the general fund?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, a combination of the general fund and possibly water and sewer. So it's wherever those employees are budgeted or situated that are members of GERS. So it's spread out, but the majority is the general fund.
And I think that's a good point. So we have to remember that, so police and fire is entirely, entirely general fund. But the general employees covers all the folks that are working in the water and sewer fund, the stormwater fund, up at the airport. It's basically folks that don't wear a uniform. And so a portion of it is general fund, but a portion of it is our enterprise funds as well. But Nick made an interesting point. So when we have these excess returns, what's our cumulative excess return? I think it's something in the neighborhood of like $50 or $60 million, if I remember from the actuarial report?
40 million.
40 million. So what happens with that is those excess returns essentially reduce the contribution that the city would be making going forward. So in effect, they are saving us money, and yes, Mayor, to your point, this will cost a little bit more in our annual contribution, but those excess returns that they've generated through their management have reduced our contribution.
Right. But, and all that makes a lot of sense. However, the advice that I have received from staff is that we cannot count on that cushion going forward because we can't predict the outcome of our investment strategies going forward. We don't want to be in a deficit situation because then we have to dig into our general fund or our fund balance in order to, in order to cover our obligations for that year. So my understanding is that we shouldn't count on that money to be able to offset the cost in the general fund because we need that money in anticipation of what our expected returns would be in the future. Is that, is that a correct understanding?
The, the city's required funding is variable.
It's variable?
It's variable. There is an equation. Many different things go into the funding part of it. I think a bigger part that may have been missed is that it's a closed plan. The pension plan was closed back in 2008. And since then, of course, our membership, there's attrition. And the city's contributions have actually fallen each and every year, and there's no reason to think that they won't continue to fall, where we simply have less members that we have to pay benefits for. So while, what I'm trying to say is while there might be fluctuations, and you know, the fluctuations are dependent upon what the, what the stock market does, do we have more or less retirements than expected? Wage increases, wage increases affect the pension plan. So, but bottom line is that because it's a closed plan, the funding continues to drop each and every year.
But, all right, to the point, the point was made that if the pension plan is making money, allowing us to reduce the city's annual contribution to the payment of pensions, if you give, if you take a point in time, say this particular fiscal year, how much is that saving the city so that, do we have money there to be able to pay this request that's now being made of us?
Is the question, would the expected drop in funding pay for the-
Yes.
Well, coincidentally, last year, well, it wasn't last year, the year before, it actually would have. But again, there's, it's variable. I couldn't say, I couldn't speak to what the market's gonna do.
Linda, can you tell us, or Laura, can you tell us, are we saving enough in, are we saving enough in not having to contribute to our pension obligations because the pension the pension obligation bond is performing as well as you say? Are we able to reduce our general fund obligation in this particular fiscal year to be able to eke out enough money to pay something that is being requested, which I think is about two and a half million dollars of, each year over the next five years?
So, Mayor, I, I'll start.
Is that a fair question to ask?
Yeah. I'll start, and then I'll kind of move it over to Laura. So, um, as Nick said, the actuarial, um, arc, the annual required contribution, um, is variable from year to year. So, what we're seeing, and, and that's funded through the general fund and water and sewer and all those other funds. So, the report that we just had, for whatever reason, um, has an increase in the required contribution from the city, partially because, did we do another decrease in the, um, actuarial investment assumption?
No.
Or, so there was an increase?
There was, there was ten million dollars associated with investment losses last year, because the market deteriorated substantially last year, which, again, that was my point, it's recovered that completely. The other four million had to do with experience rating, and, and so, the way the experience rating is evaluated, there's a number of components that go into the actuaries, what I call black box. One of them has to do with mortality. Did people die sooner or later than anticipated? Did people leave the plan before vesting? Were salary increases in line with what the actuaries estimated when they did their thing? So there's probably, and I'm gonna pick a round number, there's a dozen different things that goes into what the actuaries contemplate for figuring out what the city's annual required contribution is going to be. The main determinant is going to be investment performance, but then there's all these other components that go into the number. So out of the fourteen million dollar increase last year, ten-plus million was associated with the drop in the markets last year. The other four million had to do with higher-than-anticipated salary increases. I think they were four point seven percent on average, instead of the three percent that they were projecting. So, there's a number of variables that go into that, but if you look at this year's, again, and that was the point I was trying to make, that that market has recovered. Let me add one thing, Mayor, because you brought up a great point, and I agree with you, that market's a variable. And that was why several years ago, when I was still in the role of auditor, the first time that the plan came back and said, okay, we have finally, for the first time, met all the requirements of, of statute, to come in and ask for a COLA. And at that point, I was not in favor of, because I said, this is the first year. You know, it could very likely turn around. But we've now had multiple years where the criteria has been met, and that's why I think I would be more comfortable in saying, yeah, we, we, how many is that, Linda?
Yeah, it's been six consistent years.
Right, six, so six consistent years. So we had, when I, when, when they did the first year, I said, great, you had one good year, that's not enough to base anything on.
Right.
But we've had six consistent years now where the criteria has been met. That gives me the comfort, and I think it should give the, the commission the comfort, that the plan's in good shape, and one bad year isn't going to turn that around.
Well, I understand that, but, all right. So getting back to my question, because I know we're working on a budget right now, and, um, I don't think that, that the efforts to balance the budget this year have anticipated an extra two and a half to three million dollar charge that, um, that we can absorb. So, I want to know, is the performance on the pension obligation bonds sufficient to be able to anticipate, um, a decrease in our, um, contribution to pension, to the payment of pensions, so that we can contemplate the kind of requests that's being made of us today?
And, and part of the, the answer is not just what you asked, but also budget capacity, right? So we know that what we've, what we're dealing with as far as the almost eight percent increase in assessed values, and where that leaves the budget. So that would, if we don't, to get, if it's unanimous, um, we would be looking at either budgeting an additional two, or somewhere between two and three million. Commissioner Herbst just mentioned another idea that I, maybe you can float with them.
Sure. And one of the things, I, I was actually kind of surprised, so I had not had any conversations with, with the folks from the pension plan. I, I used to attend all their meetings, I haven't in a while. Apparently, I find myself a little busier in retirement than I had planned, so. But, you know, one of the things I think we could look at, and, and, you know, the, the choice of, of timeframes for amortization is somewhat arbitrary. So if we had looked at what we traditionally do when we amortize any changes to the plan, we usually look at a twenty-year amortization period, so, I, I think, and that would bring that number, Mayor, down substantially lower. So, we, it's a closed plan, and I know that kind of changes the calculus a little bit, but, you know, the runout on the plan, so runout is how long it's gonna take to pay out all the claims. The runout on the plan has got to be at least fifteen-plus years. So I think if we were to look at a longer amortization period, that number would come down substantially, and I don't know if you have any order of magnitude on what that might be.
You know, we actually had asked these questions, we, it, we asked the actuary to come back with numerous different cost studies, even, even a much higher COLA, because two point, we looked at two point seven five percent, three percent, three and a half percent, and two point seven five was honestly the most manageable financially-wise. We also asked that very same question, the, the, how, in answer to your runout, how long will the plan, the plan will be around at least thirty or forty more years. But, as far as the periods of amortization, the, the actuary, the seven-year was, was the max, that, that they would recommend. So, it's, yeah.
So let's try to answer my question. Because everyone else is trying to, to get at it, and I need an answer to my question. I've asked it twice now.
It's a budget question.
Yeah. It's a budget question.
So, Laura Reese, um, acting assistant city manager.
Whatever.
Yeah, whatever it is. So, um, so, for fiscal year twenty-five, the increase that we have to budget in the general fund, or the increase overall, is gonna be a million dollars for G E R S, and that's for fewer people. So over time, there's fewer and fewer active employees in G E R S, but the payment is going up. And so we're also contributing more to F R S. So, essentially, we're paying a million dollars more for fewer people. And then, um, so I think that's the question. So we don't have a savings. We're not, we're not saving in our contribution to F R S or to G E R S? And I, I think your question was, are we saving in our contribution, and we can use that savings to fund?
Right.
And, and so the answer is no, with that logic, that we have to pay for more people in F R, for fiscal year twenty-five. Our contribution into twenty-five is going up. And so, the payment of either two million dollars annually, or thirteen million dollars, it would have to be prioritized where we would not fund something else that's in the existing budget in order to fund that. So that's how we would get there, is by reducing either a C I P contribution, or we'd have to work with the city manager to identify what we're not doing in order to do that.
Or raise taxes.
Or, yeah, or raise the millage rate, that would be the easier way.
Which is not really on anyone's, in anyone's appetite here. Okay. So you answered my question. Okay, thank you.
Let me, let me ask the corollary to that, though, because, Mayor, I think, I think the better way of looking at answering that question is, so we've had an excess accumulated experience gain, which you said is forty million dollars. Okay. So to your point, Mayor, has the outperformance of the plan generated sufficient income to pay for this? Had state law not changed? So it used to be years ago that we could use the excess performance in the plan to pay for these benefits. When I was in Jacksonville, we took a pension holiday for three years in a row, because the plan performed so well, we didn't have to make any contributions whatsoever. The state came along and changed that practice, because they were concerned at the funding levels for many of the plans throughout the state were getting too low, because people were taking pension holidays. So they eliminated the ability to look at the excess earnings of the plan directly and take it out of the plan to pay for the benefit. But I think your question is, that forty million dollars of, of, of excess experience, how much has that saved us in terms of our annual contributions every year? And you may not know that number, but I think that's it. So every year, so if our plan assumes that we generate six point six, seven percent, and they generate ten percent, that additional, you know, three point three percent is saving us money every single year. So I'd like to know, how much has your outsized performance actually saved the city? Because I think that's the question you're asking.
That is the question asked, but I think Laura answered it, and she's.
No, no, she's only talking about one year. So she's not referencing the forty million dollars of excess gains over the last six years that they've accumulated. She's looking at, next year is our cost going up or down? And it's going up, because last year the market declined. So this year, the market's recovered, and the amount that we're gonna have to contribute next year, because it's always one year in arrears, is gonna drop substantially.
Well, I don't know that, that's what I'm asking.
I, I'm reasonably confident between now and September thirtieth, that the market is not gonna plummet.
Okay. At our last actuarial evaluation, the, the actuary, again, were a closed plan, and the actuary did, did, did represent that there's really, that she could see no reason why the annual contribution to the plan would not continually decrease. Okay? The last year was kind of anomaly. The years before that, I think, maybe even seven or eight years ago, the annual contribution was double what it is now. I mean, it's dramatically, Linda has it on a, I don't know, there's a lot of pages in that actuarial valuation. But I think I heard a question, I'm not sure if I heard the question, on the pension obligation bond, are we making, is the pension plan making money on the pension obligation bond? And the clear, the answer is clearly yes, because, what's, what is it, about four percent? Is the bond?
Our tick was four point one percent. Uh, and I know we've refied since then, so it may have come down even lower, but initially when we issued, it was four point one percent. And you've generated, on average, over the last?
Eight percent.
Yeah.
On, on average, for thirty years, eight percent.
Yeah.
So if you're, and that's the, so it was three and a half, three hundred and fifty million, split between two plans?
Split between P and F and, and G E R S.
So a hundred and seventy, what's?
So you got roughly, yeah, you got a hundred and fifty million, give or take, yeah.
Four percent differential on, on, I don't have a calculator, but four percent is the difference between what we're getting and the pension obligation bond, it, every year, and it's a hundred and seventy-five thousand for the pension obligation bond. So whatever, four percent of, rough math of that, what's that, six million? Six-ish?
So, so would?
Six to seven million? I, I thought that was a question in there that I.
Well, there, somewhere in there's the question.
Okay.
Okay.
There's a lot of questions.
I mean, the thing is, while there may be some, maybe some increase in, in income, is it sufficient to justify the kind of expense that we're going to have to incur in order to be able to, to respond to the requests that's being made here? In other words, can we eke out enough money from the, from the, uh, profits that we, we're making that are gonna offset the contribution from the general fund? Right? This profits, and then there's the offset from the general fund, because our, our, the amount of money we have to pay in any particular fiscal year is gonna be reduced if we have that sum of money there that's gonna be able to, um, satisfy the pensions for that particular year. So, again, I, I mean, I'm, I'm hearing from Laura saying that, you know, our, our, our costs have increased, they've not gone down, and, and, you know, where would we take the money from? She's saying we have to take it out of neighborhood projects. So, we don't want to do that. So, um, I, I mean, I, I want to make sure that if we agree to something like this, we're not shortchanging other programs that we've made promises to the people for. I don't want it to come out of water, out of, uh, you know, stormwater mitigation projects, I don't want it to come out of sewer projects, I don't want it to come out of anything that we've already committed ourselves for infrastructure. So, um, and I don't want to, I don't, I personally don't want to see how any of those become compromised because of this request to increase, uh, people's pensions. Because the amount of money that's going, that's going to go to these folks is nominal, but the total impact it would have on our, our budget would be significant. So, we just have to weigh that. Anyone else have any questions or comments?
I do, Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, so, I'm trying to think, in the six years I've been sitting here, this has come to us at least maybe three times, right? Three times? This is the third time. Maybe the third time's the charm. I have always been supportive of this. Unfortunately, I've been in the minority every single time it's come to us. My question is this. What was the ask the previous few times? I know this time it's a two point seven five percent COLA. What was that ask the last two times that I saw this?
I believe last time was a three percent. I believe last time was a three percent. Again, we looked at a number, a number of different variables, and two point seven five was the one that we thought was the most, most presentable.
But the impact numbers, the impact numbers were about the same, because I remember pulling up the, the memo from the last time, and the, um, the one-time impact was about that twelve, thirteen million, and then the amortized numbers were in that two to three million dollar annual range, um, when we looked at the one from, I guess, two years ago.
My point being, I, I do think that this is probably the strongest case this year, stronger than the other two times that this has come to us. And I do think that it's time. I, I, I support this. And I support it, uh, because also now, financially, um, I think that we're in a much better position to handle this. But I also still will go back to my argument that this is something that I consider to be, uh, about equity, uh, and fairness, and what's just. I don't know how many places you can find a retirement plan where the retirees went twenty-three years without a cost of living increase. Might you know? I think you'd be hard pressed to find that.
Many plans have a built-in cost of living adjustment.
Correct.
Where it's two or three percent every single year.
Right. And, um, again, that's part of my point. But I feel comfortable this year, more so than ever before. And as I said, I have supported this, uh, each time it has come before us. And I think that this year we can. I know this is a haul, because I think all five of us will have to vote to agree to amortize this over, whether five years or seven years. So I think, Linda, you said five years would be two point eight million, and over seven years, about two point two. And that will take a unanimous vote of this four.
So we're, we're committing for five years for two point eight million?
Well, or seven years, two point two.
I mean, are you crazy?
No, I'm not crazy.
Vice Mayor, I have the answer to your question that you asked.
Yes.
The first time they came back in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen fiscal year, they asked for two point five percent, and when they came back in twenty-two, they asked for three percent COLA.
Okay, so this is somewhere in the middle.
Yes.
It's somewhere in the middle. No, so, Mayor, to your question, no, I'm not crazy.
I'm just kidding.
I understand. Because we have heard, we've heard from both the city manager and Commissioner Herbst that the numbers bear this out for us. It's a, it's a much.
Theoretically, but in reality, they, there's no money. We just got, we just got hit, we just settled two, uh, contracts with police and fire unions that not only were intended to be implemented for this fiscal year, but were making up for all the years that, that we did not have a contract, so they were retroactive. We have a huge hit that's being made to our budget, and now, I, I'm very concerned, because our property values did not go up as much as we thought they would. They were less than eight percent, and other cities went up more. And I just don't, I, I mean, at the end of the day, if we have the money, I'd love, look, if we had millions of dollars, I'd love to give it all to those folks.
Well, here's the.
But we don't have that kind of money.
Well, I think we do. I think the, we've just heard the case that, yes, we do, in terms of the performance of the fund, and then also the, the decreasing number of folks that are getting benefits from the fund. So I think the case has been made that we are able to move forward with this. Here's the catch twenty-two. We have to vote unanimously, all five of us, to amortize this over five or seven years, where the dollar amount is much less. If we don't, and only four people say yes on this board, then we're looking at, I think, a one-time hit of over twelve million dollars, correct?
That is correct.
That's correct.
And that would have to come from all the fund balances.
So that, that, that's the catch twenty-two here. So, again, I'll leave that up to my colleagues to express how they feel. But that's where you were right, Mayor. I think that would be an amazing hit, uh, because that's a huge number in one year. That's why I would, that's why I would implore all of us to think about voting unanimously and keeping it at a cost that we know, uh, the fund could handle, and the performance of the fund, and also the fact that the number of, um, folks getting these benefits, uh, is decreasing every year. That's it. Thanks, Mayor.
If, if I may, the one, you know, I've been to, I've been in this business for a while, If, if I may, the one, you know, I've been to, I've been in this business for a while, and the one thing that always seems to get lost is, you know, a lot of folks believe that the pensions are just simply an extra, a bonus, something like that. And it's actually deferred compensation. People that enter service in, in the public sphere, they, they make less than they would have in the private sector. And the reason that they go into the public, well, one of the reasons that they go into the public services is knowing that they're going to get their, you know, their pension or their deferred compensation. It's partly the, the employment package that they, that they sign up for when, when they come to work for, you know, in a governmental entity. And that seems always, not always, but a lot of times that gets lost, because a lot of folks think, you know, that's just a, that's, that's an extra. And it, but it really isn't. It was part of the original employment package when, when people came to work for you.
Nick, I do have one question, Mayor, if I may. Typically, so your actuarial evaluation is done for 9/30/23, and that's what's going to, or, yeah, 9/30/23, and that's the fiscal 2025 budget. That's, that's done. If this was implemented, it would take an ordinance change. Would that amortize $2 million not be impacting us until 2026? That's, I guess, the question. You, you wouldn't redo this year's required ARC?
I do not believe it would impact this, this year's. I believe-
So we're really talking the- Right. So the, the actual dollar impact is the subsequent year?
In fiscal 2026, because the, the, the actuarial valuation is as of date certain.
It's always a year in advance, right. Your number is already set for next year.
And it's 9/30, there's stuff, yeah.
Ah, got it. Yes, so your number, your number in the current year budget is already set. So to your point, Mayor, we don't need to fund that in the 2025 budget. Anything you approve today will then be factored in when the actuaries do their next study. So at the end of this year, we'll have a new actuarial report, which will then drive the number for the 2026 budget, by which point in time the market recovery will have offset. Okay. That makes a lot of sense.
I'm, I'm not 100% on that.
So we're talking October 1, 2025?
So that number's already fixed, Commissioner, so, or Vice Mayor. So, the number for 2025 is based on the last, so the, the actuarial report is always a year in arrears, and they provide that number, and that's what staff bakes into the budget for next year. So the number that we have in our 2025 budget is already set. We know what our contribution is for next year, so whatever we decide today is not going to hit in the 2025 budget. It will hit in the 2026 budget. And again, by which time, the full recovery of the market will also be factored in and will offset substantially, at least a, a big piece, if not, if not all of this. So, so, yeah, let's be mindful of that. This is not the 2025 budget we're talking about.
Right. And don't forget, we're going to get an extra $1,000 in parking from Inter Miami. So, that's gonna-
I, I commit to putting all the parking money into the general fund to pay for this.
Right. That's gonna put the, that's gonna put this right over the top.
Problem solved, covered.
Thank you.
Well, much has been said, and I agree that we need to move forward where we can provide the compensation for these retirees. That's my place. I want to move forward with this.
I guess it's a three to one. And the question is, no, do we have the fourth or the fifth? 2001, is that correct? The last COLA was 2001?
2001, yes.
That was during the Bush administration, if I recall.
Bush won.
Bush won. That is over 20, this is so long overdue. So, I think it's not whether it's three to two or four to four. The question is, and it goes back to what Steve said, are, not whether we're going to give it, but whether we're going to give it in lump sum or over an extended period of time. That's the question at this point, because I, true, I'm, I'm going to join the rest of the group here, and I'm going to say, yes, 100%.
Well, do we have to make this decision tonight?
We, we would be looking for direction, and then we would bring an ordinance back at the next meeting.
Right, but do we, but can't we get closer? Can't we figure out what our financial obligations are going to be? And, you know, as, as, as we all know, there are a lot of people who are looking to this commission to help fund neighborhood projects, to continue funding a lot of our infrastructure projects. Nonprofits are going to be looking for us to fund, like we have in the past. Special events are going to be abbreviated or eliminated if we don't have enough money. So, can we get closer to what our budgetary requirements are going to be, so that we have a little better handle as to whether or not we can afford it? Because while, while the, the, the ask tonight is meritorious, I just, I don't know if we have the money, and I do not want to compromise all those other projects that we have traditionally given to in order to fund the requests that's being made of us this afternoon. And I know we don't have to make that decision tonight.
We, I think we do need to make it pretty soon. Having been on the, on the budget side of things, I can tell you that they are, you know, pushing towards the, they're sprinting to the finish right now. And they need some guidance from the commission, because they're going to be presenting a final version of the not-to-exceed millage rate at our first meeting in July. So we need to have, we need to have a fairly good idea of what direction we want staff to go into. Now, it will change from July through to September, because there's always a, a final truing up from the state of what our state's shared revenues are going to be and everything else. But that being said, the city manager needs to know what to put in there, as long, as well as the budget officer, so that they can come up with the not-to-exceed millage rate and present that to us. So there needs to be some finality between now and July 2nd. Yes, ma'am?
And I just wanted to clarify. I just checked the actuarial impact statement, and it does say that they're proposing it be effective 10/1/2024. So they would want the funding this, this in 2025 fiscal year.
So is that something that we need to do? So, Nick?
I'm sorry?
So, just based on what, what Linda was saying, so she's saying that the actuarial study assumes it takes effect immediately, and needs to be funded immediately?
That it would take effect in October 1 of 2024 is when the increase would take effect.
Right. So the funding then is, so under this actuarial report? Okay. Thank you. I'm glad you cleared that up, because typically, that's not how it gets done, but okay. So thank you.
So this is not, this is not fiscal year 2026, this is fiscal year 2025, which begins this September.
That's correct. That's what it sounds like.
And we don't even know if we have enough money to cover our current expenses. So what are we doing here? I mean, it, it's just make, I mean, it, it makes no sense to me whatsoever at this point. But, you know, you all, you know, you make that decision. Was it require a unanimous decision in order to amortize it over five years?
Correct, all five of us to do that.
So if I vote against it, then you got to write a check for $12 million?
Well, then, we have to have that discussion if we want, if we want to do that.
I just don't think we're ready yet. I think we need to know what our, what our budget looks, looks like right now. We don't have to make that decision tonight, just because it's been put on the agenda.
Well, what's the latest that we could make this decision?
So, Mayor, we're doing a budget preview at the next meeting, so on June 18th, and we have been working on that. So, if you want, we can bring this item back for discussion.
Could you bring it back?
Yeah, absolutely.
I think that, I think that just makes more sense.
After you've had a chance to, to get a little bit of the budget preview, and, and we've had, you know, I've been sitting down with the budget staff and sharpening our pencils. So we'll have a better idea.
Okay. Let's, let's do that, so that we know, so if we do decide to move forward with the increase in the pension, then we know that we have the money to pay for it.
All right. But I, I think, if I heard my colleagues correctly, there's at least four out of the five of us that would like you to find that money. So, please, please look real hard.
Correct. I get that.
That, that is correct.
Okay, um-
Thank you, Commissioners.
Yeah, thank you.
We really appreciate it. City Commissioner reports, Commissioner Herbst.
So, a couple of questions. So there's been some conversations that I've had relating to dock waiver limitations. So as you recall, we've been talking about, you know, moratoriums and limitations as it relates to the New River. But there are other parts of the city that are also looking at this question. And so I've had some conversations with, with one of the gentlemen, along with our Assistant City Attorney, just talking about how we can look at dock limitations and other areas. And it has to do with how you measure that out and where you're measuring. So, there are certain areas where there's recreational activities taking place in the intercoastal or South Middle River. So it's, it's a question that I, that I'd like for us to explore, and figure out how we draw that line in, in those areas. Because, you know, you've got folks jet skiing there, and there's a concern that we have yachts that are extending too far out. But at the same time, we don't want to be overly restrictive and not have people the ability to have a yacht behind their house on the widest area of the river.
So, well, we already have, we already have a law in place that identifies the distance into the waterway that you can, you can have a boat or a dock or a pylon, right? We already have that. And it, and then through the Marine Advisory Board, who studies each request to extend that distance, they make a recommendation, and then it comes to us either to approve it or deny it. So, we always have that option and that power to either approve or deny. So, and that was the whole point that I was trying to make when we were discussing it for the New River. Having a moratorium seems to prejudge the decision-making authority of the Marine Advisory Board and the commission, when we always have that authority to do it. So, whereabouts were you thinking of where we need to-
So Tom, I don't know if you've had any chance to, to explore this issue at all?
I have not.
Okay. So I, I'd like a, I'd like an opportunity for, to, for Tom to take a look at this and bring it back for discussion at a later point in time.
Okay.
So it's just, like I said, it, it's come up as an issue that there are certain areas where it happens to be particularly wide, and they'd like us to look at, at what our rules are around that. So, one item. Next item I want to bring up is, I see that a lawsuit has been filed against us. So Tom, are you going to be asking for a closed door to address the issues related to that, you know, civil rights violation?
Oh, first of all, I'm going, can you hear me?
Yep.
First of all, I'm going to want to select a law firm to defend us. I don't know if it would be any, one we have that's existing, or one that specializes in federal class-action suits. I haven't even seen the lawsuit yet.
Okay.
But yes, at one point, early on, I will seek a closed door.
Okay.
Have we been served yet on that?
Not to my knowledge. You, you would be the one to get served.
I would be the one to be served, but I haven't been served yet.
No, it was just reported yesterday, two days ago.
Okay.
Okay. And then the third issue, you know, we had a, a rather lengthy discussion on the charter revision recommendations, and we sort of left them hanging. I actually thought we were going to be going over that again today. I had down in my calendar that we were going to be revisiting that issue today, and I know my appointee, Richard Weiss, was of the same opinion. So, we were both kind of surprised that this was not a topic for discussion today. It seems to have been left somewhat in limbo that we'll come back and revisit this at another date. So, you know, we have, we have a couple of options here. One is, I still think we have time to walk this on and vote on some of those recommendations tonight, because as I understand it, they don't draft the ballot until after the primaries are done. So there's still an opportunity, I believe, for us to bring some of those items forward if we think that they're, you know, worthy of a vote in November, merits our, our attempts to clean up the charter. I think we still have an opportunity to do that, and, and I fully support the recommendations that the Charter Revision Board brought to us. And I'd love to see us move forward with that tonight. I don't know if there's an appetite amongst my colleagues, but I certainly think that I don't want all that work that was done by all those individuals and those many, many 18 months of meetings. We had participation from the Council of Civic Associations, we had folks on there for the neighborhoods. Each one of us had an appointee on there. I know I talk to my appointee on a, on a very regular basis. So he was aware of all the things that I was concerned about, that I thought needed to be cleaned up in the charter. I assume everybody had those same conversations with their appointees. So I think we've all had ample input into the process. The community had substantial input, they were always there. You know, again, the Council of Civic Associations was very involved in that process, representing our various neighborhood associations. So I think we've met everything we need to from a public outreach perspective. Again, the commission has had an opportunity to weigh in on things that were of concern to us through our appointees. And I, I just, I don't like the idea of letting this languish and just saying, all right, we'll address it again in a couple of years. You know, I, I, again, you know, going back to my appointee, Richard, you know, this is one of the top attorneys who's, who's crafted many of the charters for cities in South Florida. And for him to have spent uncounted hours, volunteer hours, devoting his time trying to clean up our charter, and then to have it, you know, summarily swept aside, is frustrating for him. And this is not the first time that I've seen that happen with some of the individuals we put on our boards that bring incredible expertise, deep knowledge, professional knowledge about technical subject matter, and then we simply, you know, cast it aside. So I'm very frustrated, he's very frustrated, and I, I really think we need to move forward on that. If not tonight, I'd like to know when we're going to bring that back. When are we going to follow up with the Charter Revision Board?
I have a question. The timeline at the last meeting, we were, I was, I understood that we did not have enough time. So, we have information now that there is a window to allow us to place the information on the ballot?
Okay. My recollection, Paul Van Gill, by the way, who's been thoroughly involved with this, has been very, very ill for the last two weeks. He's not been able to help at all. All, each of these questions, if you decide to do them, have to be modified to no, not exceed 65 words per question. Some of the questions need to be combined together.
Right.
That, that has not been done. So my recollection from what he told me was that tonight would have been the time, if I asked David Solomon, we would have had to adopt a resolution calling for the special election, and then submit by ordinance, first reading tonight, second reading next meeting, the questions. We don't have those. So my, my belief, and I still believe this is true.
Sure.
That I, I believe, a lot of these things need to be yet done, but they need to be refined, so that I didn't feel that what you had with it, you met with the Charter Board, all of you were on board to clearly understand what would the questions be and how they would be processed. That's what I need the opportunity to do. So, what that means is if we can't make it-
Well, Tom, Tom, could you get closer to the microphone? I missed half of what you were saying. A little closer there. Yeah, sorry about that.
The recollection I have is that a resolution had to be passed tonight to call the election. Am I right, David?
It's a little, it's a little-
Your mic is a little muffled.
That's what it is. I think the mic is muffled. David, let me, let me clarify that, though, because as I understand, I believe the supervisor of elections, or is it the county, one or the other, just has a, they have a deadline that they've set up. But I don't understand that deadline to be a statutory deadline. So if, if, if Broward County says, hey, we want all of your information by, you know, June 10th, that's nice, but that's not a statutory deadline. Or is it? Because my understanding is that it's not. It's not, it's not, it's not something that comes from the legislature.
I do not know that, that answered, that, but the Broward Supervisor of Elections, their deadline is 5:00 PM on June 10th, to have an ordinance or resolution passed with the exact questions that are going to be on. And once one of those are adopted, we also have to get them translated and everything into them by 5:00 PM on Monday.
Okay, thank you.
So that, does that have to be done by this Monday?
Is that what, is that what you just said? This coming Monday?
Yeah, I, well-
Yes.
This coming Monday?
Monday is the 10th. Yes.
The 10th.
It's the, it's the first day of qualifying at 5:00 PM.
All right.
I, I just think that I'm going to have to agree with the city attorney and the city clerk on this. City attorney, at the last meeting, you said that we're all over the map and we're not ready to do this. So my recollection is a little bit different than what we've just heard. I, I remember that there was a consensus of, we need much more public outreach, there was not enough. And my, I, I actually listened to that meeting after we met, and, and to me, it was very clear that we were just not moving forward for this November. We might continue the discussion, we might continue the outreach with the public, and we might consider it for either 2020, I'm sorry, 2026, I think we said. That would be the earliest that we could do that, is what I think that we all, the consensus was.
Or, can you, can you, can you people hear me all right now?
Yes.
All right. Or, we can take the time to get this done the way it's supposed to be done, but do a special election by mail, would cost about $600,000.
That's expensive.
It is expensive, but that's the way you would get it done if you don't want to wait for two years.
Right.
Which I would, I would recommend, give the people enough time to hear about it, so that you're all on board before you adopt the questions by an ordinance, and then we get it done the right way. I don't think we can do this in the, in the time we have now. I just, it was too late. I know you worked very hard to try to get the Charter Board to come here. It didn't happen until the last minute. I've done a couple of these for Dana Beach, and I had a lot more time to get my act together, so to speak. I don't have it for this case.
No, and I, I agree with you, and I, I think that we made that clear. I think we respect, we respect all of the work that was done by each of those people.
Clearly.
And I think that was clear, but we, we also felt that, I think that it was just a little rushed, and, and just, that's not the way we need to do something like this. This is serious. This is our constitution, our charter, and it just requires a little bit more thought, a little bit more, in fact, there, each of the items that we had, according to my notes, we still had questions, outstanding questions on most of them in terms of cleanup. I would much prefer to see a process like we saw earlier today. We saw, in the very beginning at a joint meeting, we saw what public outreach should be. We saw what it is when there is really participation from the citizens on a topic. And that was just about the reimagining of City Hall. So we need to duplicate something like that when we're talking about reimagining our constitution, our charter. Mayor?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So then, to finish up on that, so the, the question that was asked of me by my appointee is, what am I doing at the next meeting? What's my direction? Because they feel that they are rudderless right now. They don't know what the commission wants them to do, and they're drifting. And candidly, they're not going to waste their time on it. So, what's the expectation?
Well, the thing is, John, Paul is not going to be- Well, the thing is, John, Paul is not going to be in attendance at the meeting on Thursday. Anthony Fajardo, I understand, is not going to be there either.
Just FYI, I will be attending.
You'll be attending instead.
Yes.
Okay.
So what's their, what's their mission going forward at this point? If we're not going to do anything for two more years, what do we expect them to do at the next meeting? That's all I just need to tell them. I need to be able to tell my appointee, like, Richard, here's what you're doing.
I've been speaking with several members of the Committee, and, you know, they've contacted me, and I've been trying to, you know, trying to figure a way to navigate the process going forward. And the way I see it is that we really, you know, I think the process was truncated by not, our not having a joint meeting with the Board early on in the process, because while we may each individually talk to our individual appointee as to what we'd like to see, I think it was important that we had consensus on the Commission as to what kinds of changes we would like to see the Charter Review Board consider, some fundamental changes. I, I agree with you that we need to clean up certain passages because they're kind of archaic and they don't really apply to our processes these days, but far beyond that, and we can, we can keep those on hold, but the reality is there were some fundamental, really important questions that I think this Commission wanted the Board to consider, which were never ever addressed because we didn't really have that early meeting to discuss it. And I think one of the things we talked about was like, for example, a strong mayor form of government. People have been talking about that, and I've been talking about that, and I'd love to see the city maybe move in that direction, but we never even had that conversation. They never even talked about it. What did they talk about? They talked about me, they talked about the city manager, they talked about how awful I was. I mean, those were not the things that we, that that Committee was, that Board was charged with, but it became a, it became for one person in particular, the Chair, a platform to castigate people that she decided she didn't like, and I think that took away from the efficacy and the mission of what that Board was to be, was to be doing. So I, I just feel that, you know, the process kind of got derailed along the way, and I would like to see us have a workshop where we could meet face to face with the Committee, with the Board, and talk about fundamental questions that we would like the community to consider and hopefully be able to pass in the, or consider for the 2026 cycle.
So when do you see that, what do you see that occurring?
I see that occurring, I don't think they should be having their meeting on Thursday because I think we have too many absences there, especially Paul Bangl, you know, who's been consistently there and knows the history, to just take another city attorney there, I think is unfair to the, to the process.
I'm happy to go, Mayor, but I'm going to tell you.
I'm sorry?
I'm happy to attend, Susan's going to attend, I can go to this.
You can go.
But I can tell you, I have no knowledge of it.
You're just, you know, you're just appearance counsel, you know, you're just, you're just showing up. So, but the point is that I think that we need to step back and, you know, before we have our break, I think that we should have a joint workshop with the, with the Charter Review Board, and, and really come to some kind of consensus as the types of measures that we would like that Board to consider, so that through the summer and through the will be opportunities for them to finally get down to real business and to make those changes that we're looking for in the city, rather than what we were handed last time. So that's my opinion.
I don't think it's going to happen before the break, though, Mayor, because on the 18th, we've got the joint meeting with the BAB at 11:30, and on the 2nd, we've got the joint meeting with the CRA on the 2nd. So there's no opportunity between now and the break unless we're canceling somebody else and...
Well, unless we meet on a different day. We don't always have to meet on the Tuesday.
And by the way, the proof that we were not continuing this conversation today is the fact that when we had the discussion about maybe to have the Charter Revision Board back today, everyone said, no, just keep it up, keep it with the ITF, and we did not bump ITF for Charter Revision today, we stayed with ITF.
Well, that is true.
I didn't say that because I had my calendar as being on today, so I clearly did not say I wanted to do the ITF. I don't think the ITS presentation was as critical as, the ITF presentation is not time sensitive, the Charter Revision Board is time sensitive.
But that was the consensus of the Commission is what I'm saying, that's all.
Okay.
And if I can also just add to the conversation, the statement that items that were addressed and brought to us wasn't necessarily what we wanted, but also like to say that items that were brought to the table were also things that need to be addressed. So I don't think it should just be said that a make, the statement that makes appears that our Board has not done anything productive. I believe that they have been productive, there may have been some items that some of us wanted addressed that did not come out in that particular meeting, not saying they won't come out and be discussed as we go forward, but just to blanket say that they did not address issues and concerns of the Commission, I disagree with.
Well, the thing is, the Commissioner, though, the Charter Review Board did address issues that perhaps individually we may have requested that our appointee bring to the attention of the Board, but there was no consensus on this Commission as to what issues should be addressed, because we never had that opportunity, we never talked about it. We never had that joint meeting. So it was just catch as catch can, whatever you, whatever they brought up, and the first few meetings were, were meetings regarding ethics, were meetings which, which I was sat at that meeting, I sat the whole two and a half hours, and at the end of the, end of the meeting, they all concluded that we didn't need to make any changes. So again, it was, where they got, where they thought that that should have been an issue was just, it just happened because one person decided they wanted to make it an issue, even though they concluded at the end of the meeting that there were no changes that needed to be made. But the point that I'm trying to make is that, that we can't, we can't just put on a ballot, Charter, Charter changes, that is, that is our Constitution, and while there are some meritorious changes that, that have been proposed, I don't think we have a consensus here on the Commission as to which changes should be made and which should not. And to be honest with you, you know, this is going to go on a ballot with a lot of people on there running for office, all the way from President, all the way down to us, and there will be, there will be state amendments, I think there are, how many, four? I think four constitutional amendments that are going to be considered, and I just think that if we're going to ask the community to vote on Charter changes, we should have a comprehensive list of all the changes that we want them to consider and vote on, rather than just, you know, a helter-skelter, you know, approach to making minor changes when in fact it's a far more serious undertaking than just doing cleanup. There are fundamental changes as well as cleanup changes that I think should be voted on altogether, but that's just my opinion, and, you know, going forward is not, we didn't put it on the agenda. I don't know, according to Tom, there has to be very specific language as well as the number of words. I mean, none of those technicalities are going to be able to be addressed in the period of time that we have in order to address them. So we're kind of stuck.
If I might, I just want to remind the Commission that also we need to be, we need to be unified with things that we put on the ballot. I would remind everyone, the last two items that the Commission put on the ballots, the Parks Bond and then the Police Headquarters Bond, we were unanimous in our feelings about that, that that had been worked out through a lot of discussion, and the Commission went forward unanimously, and then went out and actually attended all of the meetings, we worked on that, so many of the, so many of the agencies and organizations in our city got behind that. In other words, we, we created an educational campaign, we created a groundswell, but it started with the Commission being unified in its approach to those ballot changes. We're nowhere near that right now, so I just wanted to mention that.
So again, I'll just circle back around, Mayor. I'm not interested in rehashing the past. To me, that's irrelevant. I'm focusing on what is this Board going to do going forward? When are they going to meet? When are we going to meet with them? What is our direction to them? Because I can tell you, Richard isn't going to sit here for two more years and go to meetings every month and waste his time. He has far too much to do to, to spend his life just attending worthless meetings, so...
Well, again, I spoke with Richard, and he's prepared to continue to serve, and, and so when they reconvene, I would like to, I would like their mission to be based on whatever we collectively agree should be the, the goals moving, going forward. So you're saying we don't have time to meet them before the summer break? Well, if we want to meet with them, we can, we just don't have to meet with them on a Tuesday, we can take another day and meet with them. I'm trying to be, my schedule could be made flexible. I would like to be able to meet with them before the summer break, but again, just meeting them on a Tuesday before regular Commission meeting is not sacrosanct. We can meet them any other day. So the point is that I'd like to see them reconvene, but I'd like them to have specific target issues that they can focus on and bring to the rest of the community.
And Susan, may I ask you? I did request this at our last Commission meeting when we had this discussion, because I, I was reading all of the items that the Commission had brought forward for them, and then I was reading all of the list of, actually Anthony Fajardo had a list, there were several lists that I asked if you could distribute to and make sure that the Charter Revision Board had, because my concern was that such a small percentage of the items that were before them as items that needed to be addressed, either cleanup items or items of substance, were not addressed. So I think that's actually a good place for them to start by looking at the Commission's list and looking at Anthony Fajardo's list. I think there were three lists that had a really good blueprint of where they could start, and I think that's a good place, actually.
After the last meeting, we did confirm with staff, and I think they resent those lists.
Okay, great.
And I will be, at the meeting on Thursday, I can start finding dates before the summer break, and I will bring that back to y'all's staff and, and work on seeing if we could get something scheduled before the break.
Thank you. I think that's a good blueprint, those lists are great, they're actually even broken down into what are considered cleanup items and what are considered items of substance. So thank you for that, I appreciate it.
I am offering to accompany her. Paul may well be well enough by that time to attend as well, but I will go to this meeting as well to tell him the urgency of what's going on here. I still think, I know how important this is to all of you, I've lived through this for a number of years doing these, it's so critical that you are on board first before the Charter Board talks to you, and then we put that to coalesce, then the people are aware of what's going on, and I would urge you to spend the money for a special election because that's what you might want to do. I wouldn't wait for another two years, in my estimation, but we will talk to them Thursday.
Does anybody have any time?
Oh, wait, I, like, could I, I mean, you went through everybody, could I just?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, yeah. Okay, so right now on our agenda, it's Commission reports. We're at District 1's Commission report, and technically, John, you have the floor. And so I...
I yield to the gentleman at the end of the...
No, 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 the reason I'm saying this, the reason I'm saying this is, I was going to bring this up at my thing, and I was going to, no, wait, and then eventually everybody go through, and then I was going to bring it back up again, but you've brought it up, so I might as well, I mean, again, this is your thing, I'm answering specifically to the things that you brought up, not to everybody. What was your, a couple of things, we don't have to do this at once, we have more than one bite out of this apple, and like, you had brought this up a while ago, Mr. Mayor, the last meeting we had had, you could take a piece now, a piece later, and one thought that the Advisor had said was, you know, you don't want to put everything on there because it's going to overwhelm them, the other one says, no, you get everything out the way in one lump sum. So if you do take a piece, the question is, you could, doesn't have to be a big piece, but you could take a few little, some little items that could clean up this November election coming down the pike.
Well, I thought the recommendations you made at the last meeting were very good. You tried to bring back a one that where I thought there, you know, were very clear and very straightforward with respect to public lands and so forth, you know, so at the very least, if we wanted to do anything, I think that would be a good starting point. I would support that.
Well, that's my thought. Okay, I mean, there's a lot of things that you brought up that are very unclear. I mean, you bring up the strong mayor, there's a lot of other things that we haven't vetted out, and there's some things that are like pretty darn obvious that don't need any discussion that we could maybe just take a very narrow scope of some of the things that we could get on, but the question is, and John, and, and John and, and Tom, is that a hard deadline? Is it, has that ship sailed? Are we wasting our time, or is there an opportunity to still possibly get it on for November? Is that absolutely gone, or we're not exactly sure?
I am not exactly sure. I relied on David, who's tried to help me, give me the dates.
It's a suggested date, but it's...
There are dates that you, we had to pass a resolution calling for the election, if that was going to happen, that had to be tonight, if I'm correct. Is that, am I right, David, or not?
That's the deadline that the SOE set.
So...
I have no idea if they have, they would take it after that date. I haven't had any conversations with them about it.
But then, but then you need an ordinance with the wording given to the SOE, Supervisory Resolution, by when?
So I would, I would have an appetite...
Now, hold on, I'm going to...
Let me answer the question. So...
When does that ordinance have to be there?
How it was done last time was the resolution also had the questions on it, it called the, it called the special election and had the questions, and the ordinance first reading was also done the same night. We sent the, the former city clerk sent it, the resolution to them prior to their deadline, and then the second reading of the ordinance was passed at the following meeting.
All right, that's, that's not possible tonight, obviously. It's just not possible.
Wait, Tom, can you speak?
I strongly urge you...
I'm having a hard time understanding you, Tom, I'm sorry.
I'm strongly urging you, as I said, give me the time to work with this Board and Susan, meet them Thursday, tell them what we're doing here, fashion a meeting for you, and then get what you want to do, even if you pick six topics, if I can get it done in November, I will get it done. I can't guarantee that, I don't know, I'm going to have to rely on David and Paul, Paul is still sick, but if we can do it, we will do it. I still urge you to think about a special mail-in ballot election. I know it's costly, but then I would know you have exactly what you wanted to say, the Charter Board's heard it, and they've heard it, and the press has heard it. That's what I recommend. This is something, it is a Constitution, you just can't do this on the fly. I'm sorry that Paul was sick, or that you didn't meet with the Board before, but it's important that we do it absolutely right.
So this is going to take... Special election when?
You could call it whenever we're ready.
But how much time would you need to do the two ordinances?
I don't know that answer, but I will have it.
So you would need two readings for this?
I need two readings for an ordinance, but David's talking about a resolution with two readings. That's not consistent with my understanding. I haven't done this for 10 years, I'm relying on Paul, I will get that information, but I will make sure we get it, and if I have to, I'll send it to you by email, so you'll know where we are tomorrow or the next day.
Well, here's, here's the question. If we, if we do, I mean, let's say we had a resolution, do we have another chance to bring it back to, to actually narrow exactly what's going to be on there, just to make the deadline? Do we have a resolution, it's open air?
You're too late, we were just told you have to have it by next Monday. It won't be done.
But it has to be spelled out exactly what's on there, it can't be like...
If that's what he's telling me, I don't, I don't even know that answer. That's the problem, I don't have the gentleman who's here who's woefully sick to tell me.
Yeah, they require the exact questions within, within at least a resolution or ordinance, and then we also have to provide it to them also translated as well by 5:00 PM on June 14th.
That's, that's absolutely impossible to do.
This coming Monday?
It cannot be done.
Okay, so you know, even, even if we know all the, those few items, we had the verbiage and everything, it's going to take more than that amount of time just to physically put that together.
There's no way you can cobble together what you want to do for residency, for mayor at large, for how you dispose of city property in that short of a time, even if you do a special meeting before that day, it's not going to work properly.
Okay.
It just won't.
Okay, well, listen, that's, that's useful information, that's very useful information.
All right, so it doesn't look like it's going to make it this round, so...
But a special is an option, I urge the option.
All right. John left. Where's John? Oh, all right. Are you finished with your report?
Are you done with your report, John?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, back to you.
Okay.
Okay.
It's your turn. Okay, all right. For the sake of time, I'm just going to go through my, well, let me rephrase that. First, I want to say congratulations to the graduating class 2024 of Dillard High School. Their graduation is actually tonight. And I'm really excited and and proud of those graduates. So kudos for the class of 2024, Dillard High School. Also wanting to share that on Saturday, May 25th, we had a great event with the city. We were at the Great American Beach Party, yes. And we were able to witness also the Star Walk of Fame, those honorees that were given a beautiful star on the Walk of Fame. Guy Harvey, Ph.D., Bruce Roberts, and also Carlton Moore. On Monday, the 27th, which was Memorial Day, the mayor was there with me. Who else was there?
Lauderdale Memorial Park?
Yes, we was at Memorial Park. Also, Warren-
Sandy Ninderger?
Yeah. We had a great Memorial Day opportunity to remember and keep close to heart those who served our country and also sacrificed their lives for our freedom. So that was a beautiful day and also-
A hot day, but-
Yeah, it was, it was very hot, but we did good. Unfortunately, we had some youth that that were there with the Navy and they-
Oh, the Sea Cadets.
Sea Cadets. They were affected by the heat, some from dehydration. But we, as the seniors stood, well, we drunk our water.
The old people survived.
I'm not an old person. I'll take the senior, but I'm not an old person.
Older people.
All right. A couple of things I'm asking us to address and things that are concerning for me and some questions. The first one I have is regarding, well, verifying, do we have a truck through our forestry division that picks up debris and such? Because if we have a truck that's available, I would love to see that truck being utilized for those broke violations that we see so often in our communities. And also, if we could verify, was told through Waste Management that we only have 12 days or 12 requests through the contract for bulk pickup request violations? Is that true through that contract?
I don't know that response on the top of my head. I'm looking at Dr. Gasman or Allen to see if either of those have that answer.
Okay, great.
Press, press the mic, huh?
I may have to get back to you, but I'll, I'll tell you what I know. We do have a certain number of response-related pickups that are in our, our Waste Management contract. If it is a code violation, there is a separate contract through DSD in order to address code violations. So we'll have to clarify which, which contractor would, would be responsive to that type of request.
Okay. With that, I understand that that's that gray area with that. But do we have that truck available through the forestry department that we have? Is there still a truck in the fleet?
A claw truck is what you're asking?
Yes.
There is a claw truck within Parks and Recreation. That's something Carl may have to respond to. But we do have that vehicle within the city, but that's not typically what it would be used for.
Okay. Because where I'm going with this, we, we do have that issue where we have to wait for availability for those items to be picked up. And it's becoming, I think I'm on my second or third request about debris that's not being picked up. It was specifically this time, there are tires in a swell in front of a residence that missed the bulk. And we've been trying to get it picked up. No one's come out to flag it. But my point is, if we have a truck that we can utilize within our city that's in the fleet, and it's, why aren't we using it? If that's something that we could move in a direction of?
Yeah, we, we can look at it in context of the budget because probably it's just not staffed regularly to do routes. So I'll, I'll make a note and we could see if that's something that we could put in as, as a budget.
Yeah, if we, if we could get an address and a, we can look up the history within the-
It is in the Fix-It, Fix-It FTL. Okay, so it is available. But it is, we're going on almost, well, at least 20 days because it was, the items were put out bulk day, not removed because they were tires, and they're still sitting there. And I personally made requests about this.
Yeah, if, if you could provide, if your staff could provide the address-
Yes.
To my office, we'll see what we can do to follow up.
Okay, all right. So thank you. And also with that, how many picks up are allowed through Waste Management? Whatever that number is per year or per month?
Correct. I'll get that for you.
Thank you, Nancy. Thank you. Okay. Also, in regards to an ordinance, it's been brought to my attention that there's some attention being given to an ordinance regarding illegal parking with our 18-wheelers and tractor trailers that are parking illegally in our communities. I'm trying to get clarity, those trucks that have been red-stickered. The conversation is moving in a direction where even though they may move their truck from that location, that there will be no reset, even though they moved the truck, that tag number is still associated to the red sticker, and they can be violated.
And it looks like Al Battle is coming up. Maybe give us some information on that?
Okay.
Al Battle. Come on down. You were on.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Pittman and to the commission. When our items are violated in a way that it stays with the violator, violator, if you will, that is what we call a continuous violation. So in the event that they have to either appear for a hearing or we can continue the violation or to assess fines, that is a process that we use to deal with repeat violators. So it allows for us, it allows for our enforcement activity to be elevated as well as, um, in other words, we would not treat them as a first-time violator if we, if we had to red-tag them again. So I think your question was, would we treat them like a continuous violator, and we would.
Okay, so scenario, the day is Monday. My truck is red-stickered. I moved my truck on Tuesday. On Thursday, there's a new red ticket. Why am I not towed?
Well, we'd have to tow it when the vehicle is there. That doesn't mean we wouldn't start the process, but there is still due process for, for them to remove the vehicle. It'd have to probably be related to that particular vehicle. I can't respond to it from a-
Right.
That's particular scenario. But if we have the power to tow and that vehicle has met that threshold, we would make every attempt to tow.
Okay. Now, back to my question, is that part of our ordinance? If I'm asking, I guess, city attorney to define the ordinance? Because if that's the case, or if not the case, how do we get, go to that direction? Because code is aware that we have violators that are just pop-coring all over the city.
Right, right.
And they're, they're just pushing the envelope, and nothing is being done about the violations.
I don't have the answer at hand, Commissioner, but I will get it. And we will work towards, I know you've talked about this several times, and it's now time to step up and get it done. So I'll work with Al.
This is the first I'm hearing of, so we'll, we'll work with him.
The ordinances we have in place, if they can be done to do that. If not, we will establish the ordinance by bringing it to you to get that done.
As long as it's within Florida statute and in our local, local law, we, we will, we'll do everything we can to enforce it. I'm not familiar with that one off the top of the head, but I'll get with Tom and we'll figure something out.
She has brought this up. It's perennial. We need to address it. It keeps going on, and it's got to stop.
Understood, understood.
Okay. And my next question, I believe, also may be for, in a, in a code question.
Okay.
It's regarding illegal dumping in alleyways, okay? This is specifically dealing with homeowners in Dorsey River Bend.
Okay.
Um, like Northwest 10th Avenue, Fifth Court, those alleyways. Those particular homes are, fall under the neighborhood, well, the, the plot name of Tuskegee.
Right.
Okay. We're being told that they are legally responsible for the cleanup of that debris-
Right.
In the alleyway.
That's correct.
Now, what I'm trying to find out, have they been notified in writing about these fines? And also, how do we remedy these fines if they are violated in error?
In other words, someone has dumped it there and it's not theirs, right? We, so we, we want, we want compliance. We are not looking to cite owner if they're trying to comply. So we wouldn't try to go and erect a fine or place a fine on a property if there's an effort to try to remedy the issue. It sounds like in these situations, it's being dumped illegally. We can only cite the property owner, allow them due process to clean it up. If they cannot clean it up, we, I'm not sure of the resources we have to pick it up for them other than what we just talked about a little bit earlier with having a truck in order to do so or work with Public Works on some type of pickup through our normal contracting efforts. That's probably something we probably need to come back and talk to you about to see if there's a way to, if this is a now nuisance issue, try to figure out a way to remedy it if it's becoming a problem.
Okay. And then coming back on that same question, many of those neighbors are citing that they never knew that they were responsible-
Right.
For the alleyway.
Right, right.
Is there an ordinance or is there something written that ties them to the alleyway? When, because I believe that area was also part of, if I'm not speaking out of term, like CRA properties that were bought for new home development. We're going back almost 30 years.
Right, right.
Okay, but was that identified when they were purchasing the property, homes being built? Was that told to them? Because most of them are saying they never heard this before. So if we can verify that-
Sure.
Where it came from, so they, everyone will be in the know and that there's no confusion about the issue.
So you're, you're wanting for us to help them confirm that the area in the alley is a part of their responsibility?
Whatever documentation we have, and that's also, I'll, I have staff to reach out to you.
Okay.
Because there's multiple alleyways that that applies to.
And the trash, the trash truck travels down that alley, picks up the trash. That is typically the case, that the alley behind the, the immediate area behind the property is that property owner's responsibility to maintain. But they're putting the trash out there and also to keep it clean. But if that wasn't communicated properly or there is some discrepancy in terms of understanding where the responsibility lies, we, we can help reach out and clarify that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's what we're asking.
My office can help them by looking at the deeds for the property.
Right.
If you identify the areas you're talking about, I can look at the Platts, and then I have to see the deeds, and then the people have to be notified. Here's a copy of the deed. This is your property, so they're not surprised by it. They might not have read the deed.
Yeah, we, we would use our property record system to help clarify where the property lines are. So, yeah, we, we can, we can definitely close that loop for you. And we'll work with your office to get the properties in question. It sounds like more of a, I know that, I know the area that you're talking about where those alleys exist. And there's several of them kind of between Sisdrunk South to Broward Boulevard and Sisdrunk North to Sunrise as well.
Correct. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Battle.
You're welcome.
Also, that, that's all that I have for you. Thank you very much. Also, Ben Rogers, if you could, I have a question for you. If you can come to the podium, please. Okay, thank you so much. It's in regards to a request for street naming Northwest 16th Avenue between Sunrise and Eighth Street, I believe, for Ada Moore. Could you share a little bit with the request and what the family is desiring?
Yeah, so when we met with the Moore family and we were talking about the event, one of the ideas that came up was doing a secondary naming on Northwest 16th for Ada Moore. And so what we need from the commission is to figure out if this is a commission action that would bypass or alleviate the city's policy for us to go out and get petitions and, and have the expense borne by the city and not by the family. And so that's, I think, what we're looking for today is if there's an appetite from the city commission to support a secondary renaming of Ada Moore.
Okay, all right. So what Ben is sharing with us for that secondary name, renaming of the street for Ada Moore, who is the mother of Carlton Moore, who, the 16th Avenue is parallel to Carter Park. And for many years, she was like the mother of Carter Park. She worked there. She was-
I knew Ada Moore.
Okay, all right. So just for the room to know that her input and her hands-on of the community, I'm asking, we as a commission, if we would go forward to allow for the secondary naming of this avenue in her honor.
Well, so there's a, there's a procedure to get to that point.
Yes, so there's two, there's two ways to get there. One is putting the onus on the neighborhood where they have to go through and get a petition of support from all the impacted properties. They would also have to bear the expenditures associated with the name change. However, if the request comes directly from the commission, it bypasses that policy, and it would just be directing staff to go and work on the initiative and bring it back as a resolution for a commission to approve.
Well, I, I mean, I have no problem, you know, agreeing to that. I just, I'm always very uncomfortable doing something without the community kind of buying into it. That's the only thing. So is there, is there any way we can still have neighborhood buy-in for that? I mean, it's a, what?
Yeah, I mean, if you direct staff, we can definitely put a caveat in there that we'll get some letters of support from the neighborhood or the, the direct area.
What's, what association is that?
We have Doors and also really the, the four quads, the four in the area. But Doors is the immediately affected, yeah.
So, Ben, how long does that process take for the neighborhood to have buy-in and, and talk about it?
So if we do it from a staff, we'll reach out to the HOA. Maybe they'll bring it up at a board meeting and get that feedback for us, get a letter of support from the official board.
And that's all it is?
Yeah, that's all, that's, if we, if we take-
If we can get that back, I would love to do that. Yeah, and then can we just have an agenda item come before us?
Yeah, so once we get all that information, we'll also do some mockups of what the streets, uh, street signs would look like, the estimated cost, and then that would have to come back for the commission to approve. Once that's approved, then we would work with Broward County Traffic Engineering on the signs.
Right.
That usually takes a-
How many blocks are we looking at, Commissioner?
Um, I believe it's only maybe three.
Yeah, we can, we can define that and bring it back.
So between Seventh and Sunrise?
It's between Sunrise and Eighth.
And Eighth, and that's three blocks. Okay. All righty. All right, if you could do that, that would be great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Also, in regards to community master plans, I don't see Chris Cooper. Okay, all right. Um, in regards to the community master plans, back on, in April, I think it was our first meeting, we had a detailed conversation about opportunities for communities to begin discussing with staff master plans for different areas. And I was specifically looking to have that conversation regarding the Davie Boulevard corridor. And what I'm trying to find out is what is the criteria? How do we get started and how, basically an ETA? Because when I go back and look at my notes and then also the minutes, we discussed this, and the mayor had even said for staff to help those communities, neighborhoods who wanted to start a master plan.
I'm not aware of that one in any of my discussions with our staff. It sounds like the discussion is similar to others that we've had with neighborhoods about developing a master plan. Usually, it's something that staff will do the research on and come back to, whether it be the city manager or the commission, and provide some insight and information about maybe cost to take us from concept to actually being a codified master plan or at least a vision plan. My guess is that conversation was how do we get started and what would be the next steps?
Right.
We can definitely circle back with you and give you a sense of where we are. And it may be something that requires us to have some money in the budget at a future, future time in order to do it, similar to the other areas that we've done, whether it be South Andrews, Sisdrunk, 13th Street and of the like. There would also usually be a money component to it in order to do it in a way that's visual, involves the community and from a community input standpoint. And if there's any need for there to be any ordinances or any type of policies placed, put in place to help with the future development plan, we'd also need funds in order to kind of take it from start to finish.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
The last update that I had gotten from Chris was we were in the process of getting a consultant on board that would help facilitate that process. If you could just find out where that process is, that'd be great.
Sure, will do.
Okay, all right. I'm getting down, gentlemen, I'm getting down. You know, I love the floor when it's my turn. Regarding school zone speed cameras, our pilot program. School is almost out, and we're going to be starting a new school term. Do we have any update as to what company or companies that'll be participating with the school zone speed cameras?
I think if I heard from both PD and procurement earlier this week that the RFP- I think if I heard from both PD and procurement earlier this week, that the RFP for that vendor is ready to go out. Linda, if you could maybe just confirm that with Glenn, that would be great. But so it would be an RFP, and I know PD has done a draft ordinance, and I think I've provided that to anyone who's asked for it, but I can do that again.
So with the pilot program as well, we're going to do a PR?
So it's actually not going to be a pilot, it's, I mean, when you think about a pilot, it's going to be the intersections or the school zones that we identified.
Right.
So it's just going to be a full rollout at those specific ones versus a pilot.
Okay, all right, because I'm-
So we're going to pick a single vendor-
Mm-hmm.
-and proceed with whatever the committee recommends.
Okay, all right, sounds good. Utility bills, I don't know if my colleagues have been getting emails regarding our, our utility bills. If we could have someone to discuss the fees that are being associated with credit cards, debit cards, checking accounts, and then also if we could remind our neighbors that increase, what that percentage is, because I'm, we're also getting calls about the increase, and many do not realize that an increase has been implemented to the utility bills and that percentage.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. So the city, through the budget process last year, recommended passing on the credit card fees on to the end users. Last year, we spent about $2.7 million in credit card merchant fees. Our utility billing system is fairly aged, and one of the things we're recommending with the budget is a replacement of that system. As such, because the system is so old, we rely on a third-party provider to do the online bill presentment and collect our payments from us. And so when we implemented the new process of passing on the fee, the third-party provider gave us a fee schedule that include, included charging for checks, as well as e-checks, because it's a process. E-checks, credit cards, everything. It was a dollar ninety-five-
Regular checks don't cost more, regular che-
Huh?
I mean, I pay my utility bill with a check every, every month, and there's no extra charge for that.
Not for a regular check, but for e-check-
E-check.
Or a direct deposit-
Any kind of electronic processing.
Any kind of electronic processing, the vendor is charging this and fee for.
Why do we keep sending them to Tampa?
Because that's where our P.O. Box vendor is, I'm sorry, for lockbox.
I know, but it always makes my bill late.
I'm sorry. So what we have done, because we have heard a lot of community and neighborhood inquiries about this, is we've negotiated with the vendor to take away any processing fee related to ACHs. So even though they were charging a dollar ninety-five fee, the city will absorb that. So we've made that change, and we expect it to be implemented in the next two days. So it will no longer be charged for that, at all.
We've had, I've had people that have had that fee also, will they be reimbursed retrospectively or not?
No, no, well, nothing was planned for it, because it didn't go to us, it went to the vendor.
Okay, but we had to authorize the credit card fee, we didn't authorize-
As a debit and-
No, we didn't authorize that.
So, and I just want to make it clear, there's a big difference, the city does not accept PIN debit cards, meaning that you put it in, you put a PIN number in, that's what the direct cash is. We take, if you use your debit card, you're using it as a Visa or MasterCard transaction, and so we're paying a fee on that. We do not take PIN debit cards. So only Visa and MasterCard transactions only, with a credit card.
But I think when it came before us, I think Chris is the one, or somebody, he said specifically for, for the credit card fees, and we authorized that, we did not authorize that other fee.
Checks.
No, we did, we did not give permission to do that.
And, and that is fine, like I said, the third-party vendor, that's just how their solution works.
But you're going to take that off, but retrospective, retro, you're not-
So we've only been doing it since May 1st, so if anybody wants to send something in to get a refund for the dollar ninety-five, I will absolutely process that, yes.
Okay, it's not a percentage, just a flat dollar?
It was a flat dollar ninety-five fee, correct.
Okay.
And what is the fee for the credit card?
It is 2.95%.
Of the?
Of the bill.
Bill.
A minimum of 1.95, and then the floor is 1.95, and anything else is 2.95% of the bill.
Okay, because just as Merritt said about, you know, even those who are trying to get around this, mailing their checks to Tampa, they still got that wonder whether their check is received late, and now you're getting a fee for being late, so it's a whole-
It's a racket.
It's, he said racket, so we're going racket, but this is something that-
It's a racket.
-we know we intended, my interpretation, when I voted yes to move forward with this, that it would only affect the credit card user.
Right.
So, because you have individuals who, the debit card, you know, even though it has that logo on it, is, you can't, it's not a credit card. So, I know it's bank policy.
It's bank policy, they process it as a credit card, though, and that's, that's what, we can't control that, we don't know when they swipe, whether it's a debit card from a bank account, or-
Or input, because you're not swiping what you're inputting.
Right, whatever they're inputting, we don't, we don't get that information, it's stored all on the third-party's site, so we don't know what the method is, it just has a four for Visa or a five for MasterCard, and that's all we know. So if they're using their ATM as a Visa card, we can't wait, there's no way for us to know what those cards are, and what types of cards they're using.
Okay, so with the new program that we're looking into, is that even an option to be able to identify between a credit card and a debit card?
The only way to identify with a debit card is if you use a PIN. So unless you put it in and put a PIN number.
That's when you're at the kiosk.
Well, a lot of, some, some other agencies do allow you to pay for it with a PIN, we just never enabled that provision. We don't allow for people to use a PIN.
Okay, because this is, you know, we, we voted, I voted, I can't speak for my colleagues, but I voted on an opportunity that I thought was going to be beneficial for the, the city overall, but not at, at the same time, a hardship for our neighbors. Because, you know, some people may think $2 or $5, $10 isn't a hardship, but that becomes an additional tax for someone who's just trying to make it on their, their income. So that's my concern with it, so.
You're right, Karen.
I wanted you to share, because I, when I answer the questions, of course, it's not received very well-
Mm-hmm.
-but I want it on record, so our neighbors will understand that, what the process is, and that it's coming from the banks in a sense.
Yes.
And we are in a position where we are not in control of those particular fines.
We're not.
Okay.
That is correct.
Hard to.
Yes.
How much is the increase percentage that we are, we voted on for the water bill? That increase?
I will go and have that pulled, I don't know what information.
It was, it was a composite, so the water was going up twenty-two and a half, the sewer was going up less, and I think the composite increase in the water bill was about 14% for this coming 10-1, 24.
Okay, because again, I don't know if I'm speaking on the, on the pole, on the, on the platform by myself, but I'm getting the, the routine calls, my water bill was $100, now my water bill is $300. So there's something for discussion here, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, and I'm done.
That's it, okay.
Thank you very much.
Do you, do you accept telephone payments?
We do have an IVR system, yes, that accept telephone payments, yes.
And is there, like, if you pay by check over the phone, is there a fee for that or not?
Well, like I said, the third-party vendor who also does the IVR is the same vendor that does our utility billing platform, and they were charging for any type of electronic payment. Like I said, we just changed that agreement to remove it for checks or anything that has to do with a bank draft. But we will still continue to charge it for credit card merchant fees only.
Oh, so everything you said still applies to the bank pay by phone, the exact same way, okay.
And no matter what, the, whether it's online, whether they call in through the IVR, or whether they walk up in person, they were paying that fee, because it was all going through that vendor's platform.
Okay, so folks, we have a little situation here. It's almost six o'clock, and I was wondering if we could do the balance of the commission reports at the end of tonight's meeting, so we can do the CRA meeting now, and then take a 20 or 25-minute break for, between now and the next meeting, is that okay? Would you be offended by that?
I would not, me, no, no, I was going to suggest, because we have some people out here that are time-sensitive, that are going to need to talk ASAP. No, no, so I agree with that, I agree with that.
All right, so why don't we do that?
Steve, are you okay with it?
I'm fine, I'm fine.
So we'll suspend, we'll continue the conference meeting with commission reports after the evening meeting, so I'd like to convene the CRA board meeting if I could, so, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Herbst?
President.
Vice Chair Glassman?
Here.
Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
Here.
Commissioner Sturman?
Here.
Chair Trentalis?
Here. So, moving to the CRA agenda, we have M1, motion approving minutes for the May 21st, 2024 CRA board meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Some move.
It's been moved and seconded.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
Here.
No, yes or no, yeah.
Commissioner Sturman?
Much is here.
Yes.
Yes, you're out of order.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Chair Glassman?
Yes.
Chair Trentalis?
Yes, and M1's approved, moving on to R1, it's a resolution approving a $6 million development incentive program for forgivable loan to Serum Commercial, Inc., for the 1435 Art Exchange Mixed Use Project, located at 1429 to 1435 Sistrunk Boulevard, and so forth. We have a couple people sign up to speak, but I think it's just for questions only, oh no. Well, they're from the organization. Zamar Brown, Claudia, and James, you're just here for questions only, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone from the commission have any questions? If not, would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduce.
To introduce, please call the roll.
A resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the Fort Lauderdale Community Redevelopment Agency approving a forgivable loan of $6 million to Serum Commercial, Inc., for the 1435 Art Exchange Project under the Development Incentive Program, authorizing a lease of commercial space of real property located at 1429 through 1435 Sistrunk Boulevard, to the Fort Lauderdale Community Redevelopment Agency, authorizing the executive director to execute any and all related instruments, delegating authority to the executive director to take certain actions and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Chair Glassman?
Yes, and all the best, it's an exciting project, looking forward to it.
Chair Trentalis?
Thank you, that, that resolution is now approved, and is there any further business of the CRA? There being none, that meeting's now concluded. Thank you, so we will reconvene the evening meeting at 6:30, and see you then. you. So we will, uh, reconvene the evening meeting at 6:30, and, uh, see you then.